Roll call first, all right, so Al, you want to take roll call? No? Al, do take roll call.
Joe DiMartino.
Yeah.
Anthony Petracca.
Yeah.
Jessica Rubry.
Here.
Josh Barrett.
Here.
Joe Garcia.
Here.
Corum is present.
Felix is here now.
Felix.
Felix Appalonia, he's here, okay, all right, thank you, Al.
Corum is present. Thank you. You asked me for the tough stuff.
Yeah. Item one, approval of the minutes, review and approval of February 7, 2022, meeting minutes, is there a recommendation for approval?
Motion is moved.
No second?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, um. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
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 Thank you, item two, Cascade Falls, 771 Main Street, assessors plat 2 lot 60, 661, master plan decision, this public hearing was last month, but is there someone here to speak on behalf of this application?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
David Johnson, attorney for the applicants.
Good afternoon, Mr. Johnson.
Um, the only thing I have to add, other than the public hearing that was last week, the agenda didn't say it was a 20 unit subdivision, it's a 16 um, unit subdivision, so, um, but that's really all I have to add, Mr. Ed Pimentel, our land use and planning expert is here, if the board has any questions for him, he was unavailable uh, last month, but otherwise, uh, we have nothing to add for the record.
You say, what, how many units are there?
Uh, 16.
I think the meeting minutes reflected 16.
Yeah, the minutes reflect, it was just the agenda that was on um, on the website this morning, uh, had 20 instead of 16, so I just wanted to make a point.
Okay.
In any, any decision that was voted on, it was, it was corrected to the 16 for the vote.
I think they changed the wrong one on the agenda, changed the wrong one on the agenda, right? Ah, okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes.
Just so we get that, that straightened out, as long as notices, proper notices, have gone to the uh, budding owners.
Yep.
The matters properly before you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, so, so we had the hearing, is there anything further you want to add besides just the number of units?
No.
Anything else? Um, because we, we are, uh, it's been recommended that um, if we were to approve this as master plan, it would still be subject to a Rhode Island DEM preliminary determination.
Yes.
Can you address that?
Yes, that's correct, that is, uh, Mr. Campbell, I believe, is uh, via Zoom available, he, that is, uh, those applications are ready and we're awaiting this evening's um, uh, vote to submit those.
All right, so if we approve this subject to that, you'd be okay, but I mean, we're not going to approve it, because we're going to approve it, but it's still going to go to zoning, it's not, yeah, right?
Yes.
So, we're going to write, basically, this is, becomes recommendation to zoning, you got it?
Yeah, there's some.
Zoning is free to ignore it, just so you know.
Fair enough.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you, uh, so I would entertain a motion that we approve this master plan with the stipulation that um, they will be, the Rhode Island DEM preliminary determination be incorporated in what gets submitted to zoning.
Motion is made.
No second?
Second, okay.
All right, any further discussion? Nope, not, all, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this will go to zoning now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, um, okay, that's item, item three, East Greenwich Luxury Estates, 511 East Greenwich Avenue, assessors plat 30 lot 17, this is both a public information meeting and a master plan decision. Paul Attorney Cronin, sorry you have to stand.
Good evening, yes, somebody stole my rolly cart.
Can I just, one second, I'm ready, I'm trying to type this, second, who seconded the motion to approve the master plan?
I think it was Ja, was it you, Josh?
It was Josh Barrett.
Josh Barrett.
Thank you.
It was like two people, two people, uh.
Yeah, I got Mr. Appalonia doing the motion.
Moved and seconded, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Mr. Appalonia just stepped out.
Where'd he go? Felix.
He just stepped up once.
Got a conversation.
Yeah, I, I can wait a second.
You can wait a second, yeah, because you want everybody here, right?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Oh, a 20 second timeout.
Yeah, yeah.
TV timeout.
Okay, so, um.
How you doing?
Good.
How are you, Jack, what's your status, good, how you doing?
Good.
All right, okay, Felix is back, all right, Attorney Cronin, you're ready.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, I was here last month on, pre-application on this project. Uh, the, um, we're here tonight on master plan.
Yep.
And recommendation to zoning.
Yep.
On the identical, uh, project, but I'll introduce it again, and then I'll have Mr. Morehead go over the site design with you.
Thank you.
All right, so 511 East Greenwich Avenue, uh, AP 30 lot 17, it's on the south side of East Greenwich Avenue, it's zoned R10. So, the uh, the lot is currently six and a third acres, uh, with the two family residence and a garage on the property, uh, those structures, the residence and the garage are in not great condition, they will be removed, I mean knocked down, the proposed use is a condominium, five buildings, each with four units, each has two stories and two bedrooms.
But Mr. Chairman, may I enter up for a moment? I noticed that Tom is pointing to something, if there is a plan, could he turn it somehow? Because those people who may be watching, I don't know whether it's possible, but the people who may be watching on Zoom cannot, don't even know what he's talking about.
All right.
Okay, I'll, uh, Mr. D Fiore, I will give it a shot.
Just, just so that, if there's any, if there's anybody there that they, I don't know how you do it.
I'm blocking out some nice folks here, though.
Yeah, but if you've, um. What if you turn it to face the audience, would it, because I'm looking at the Zoom picture, maybe that'll show it, uh, it'll show it.
It does.
Yeah.
It shows it, but it's.
It still gives them some idea.
Still give, okay, okay.
Great.
All right, good.
Thank you, Mr. D Fiore.
Yep.
Um, okay, so we have a master plan application. For a condominium, five buildings, each with four units, uh, each is two stories, two bedrooms, one car garage, uh, we do have to go to zoning, uh, for a special use permit, uh, for multifamily use, as we always do when we do a condominium, uh, and in addition, we need one variance for height, 34 feet where 30 is allowed.
Okay, excuse me, one second, did you just say five units, four, four, five buildings, four units?
Right.
Right, five buildings, each with four units.
Oh, because the agenda just says the 16, we talked about.
Yeah, that was the issue.
Got it, all right, Roger that.
We can cover that now, if you'd like, or.
I think technical review says 20.
It, we, we sent notice, uh, in the paper and to the butter saying 20, uh, there was a, a misprint on the agenda, uh, an amended agenda was filed that said 20, our application's for 20, so I appreciate you bringing it up, needs to be dealt with, right, so.
Mr. Chairman, again, let me interrupt, this legal counsel, once the notice has gone sent by them with the correct number, that's satisfactory for you to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Okay.
So, uh, this is a residential use in a residential zone, uh, there is Cox Communication Commercial Land to the south of the project, is single family uses to the east and west, and there's a condominium at 500 East Greenwich Avenue, directly across the street to the north, the, um, the project has access to East Greenwich Avenue, so public water from East Greenwich Avenue, the utilities, uh, does have public sewer available, uh, there is a predominant feature on the site is about two and a third acre wetland, Mr. Morehead is outlining in blue.
Yeah.
I think my coloring last month was a little different, but this, this week, this month, it's blue.
Okay.
Uh, and that wetland has an associated 50 foot buffer, which Mr. Morehead is outlining yellow, if you can, if anyone can see the, uh, the plan here, uh, the limit of disturbance uh, where construction can take place, contains 2.39 acres. We did a multifamily density calculation to determine how many units we could put up there, the, uh, buildable area will allow for 23 units, so our 20 units doesn't require any variance with regard to lot coverage density or, or anything like that, um, as we, uh, discussed last month, parking is always an issue with these projects, so we have 20 single car garages, one in each unit, 40 onsite paved parking spots, so where 40 are required, 60 are accounted for, um, the, uh, one item that doesn't show up on any of the plans, or in, is not required by the regulations, is Mrs. Perry lives next door to this project, let's see here, to the immediate east of, uh, excuse me, immediate west of the project. And we've, have agreed, uh, to fence that boundary line.
Okay.
Uh, oh, you know, along where her house is.
Yep.
Um, so that, that doesn't really fit in with exactly what we're doing, but it is a part of this project, and, uh, we want to publicly acknowledge that, uh, responsibility. So, uh, as always, we want to avoid redundant testimony where possible, so I'm going to ask Mr. Morehead, uh, to go over the site design.
Good.
Uh, with you, and I ask, uh, that you accept him as an expert, he has testified before this board on numerous occasions, all right, Mr. Morehead?
I'll entertain a motion that we accept Mr. Morehead as an expert.
Motion is made.
Second. Felix and, and, and.
Tony. Tony.
Mr. Morehead, could you, could you say your name?
We're going to approve them first, Al. We got a motion, we didn't vote on it. So, all in favor of approving Mr. Morehead?
Aye.
Aye.
Like, aye, Mr. Morehead is now approved, all right, Al.
Mr. Morehead, could you state your name and address?
Name is Scott Morehead, uh, business address is 410 Tyoka Avenue, Coventry, Rhode Island, a registered professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island.
Good.
Would you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Morehead.
Uh, Mr. Cronin covered most of the basics on that, so I'll stick to more of the engineering things that he did not cover, one thing I would like to add about the buffer on the west side to the Perry property, uh, we did actually show a fence and some, some vegetative screening on the plan, and on that side, the minimum building setback is 10 feet from the property line, but we have set those buildings back anywhere from 21 to 32 feet, so there's additional separation from that abutting residential property, so, um, I think the, the main concern, uh, Mr. Cronin wants me to address is drainage, we all know there are some drainage problems across East Greenwich Avenue, there is a large, fairly large swamp on the easterly portion of the site, and this site generally grades, drains from west to east into that swamp, uh, 99% of this site does not drain onto East Greenwich Avenue directly in the current situation, uh, even though this is master plan, we have actually done a complete drainage design to make sure that this project was work, because you don't want to design something and then say, oh, I don't have a place to put the drainage afterwards, and this will have to go to DEM to wetlands for drainage approval.
Okay.
We have kept all of the proposed development of the site outside of that 50 foot perimeter of the wetlands, aside from a little tiny grass swale to direct, uh, the water and the final discharge, we will pick up all the water from the roofs, the parking lots, the driveways, will all be directed to stormwater treatment area, there will be, I have a first water quality treatment, and then into a detention basin in the center of the site, which will then discharge into that swamp, uh, close to the culvert under East Greenwich Avenue, which feeds into Cedar Brook. We have designed that drainage, so there'll be no increase in runoff from the site in up to the 100 year storm per DEM, uh, requirements, we also will not direct any of our drainage from the site directly onto the pavement of East Greenwich Avenue, so it will not exacerbate any problems that are already there.
Okay, so you won't exacerbate the problems already?
That is correct.
There are problems already there.
There are problems, so, uh, the East Greenwich Avenue has very little in the way of formal drainage facilities.
Yep.
Um, so we understand that, I'm very familiar with East Greenwich Avenue, there's also a small culvert in front of our property, uh, which, which runs across the driveway, we will pick that up and pipe it under the driveway, so it doesn't flow across the driveway, we'll actually pipe that underneath into the small isolated wetland, so we actually may have a small improvement to some of those drainage situations right there, we will not add to any flooding or, or.
And that will handle extreme flow?
The existing culvert that's there on East Greenwich Avenue kind of runs parallel with the property towards where our driveway is, it's only a 12 inch pipe, I doubt if it handles extreme flow now, because it's very shallow, uh, so there's generally any screen you have, and heavy rains, the water just runs down the road, because there's no pipes to pick it up, what we can pick up at our driveway entrance, we'll pick up with a catch basin and pick up that pipe and try to direct it onto our property, the isolated wetlands, may take, maybe take a little bit of that water that runs down the pavement off, but there's no way we can pick it all up, uh, onto our property, but, but like I said, said, we will not make anything worse, if anything, we'll make it a little bit better.
And, and we didn't, for some reason, didn't get a plan in advance of the meeting tonight that shows your, your, uh, water, water, water flow, waterfall plan, so I don't, I haven't seen it.
Okay, well, part, part of the set was a grading plan, there's the site plan that's up, there's also a grading plan that showed.
When I went up to the office, there were just, there wasn't one of these, it was the other two.
These were, um, provided at the, at the.
So, it's there from last month?
Yeah, I didn't make copies again.
Oh, you didn't, so you, um, I thought you did more work since last month, am I wrong? I thought it's the engineering, because of the issue of storm.
No, I, I had done that before.
Before, so the plan that we got last month has got it?
Yes, it does.
All right.
And, and the, and I like to point out, the detention basin that we've just put on there is quite large, but it's also very shallow.
Yep.
Um, in a 10 year storm, which is when you get almost five inches of rain 24 hours, there'll only be about a half a foot of water in, and closest to development, and less than a foot on the other end, and in a 100 year storm, which is the worst case we're going to get, there'll be a foot in the shallow end and two feet in the stormwater, so it's not this deep, uh, pond that's dangerous, so it's very shallow, it's very flat, uh, and it's designed to drain dry in less than 72 hours.
Yeah, and, and, um, who would be responsible for maintaining that?
The homeowners.
Homeowners.
The homeowners association.
homeowners association created.
It's a condominium association, yes, so for that.
That'll be graded, and that'll be built into the homeowners association requirement to, to, to.
Right, they'll be responsible with drainage, all the maintenance, all the utilities, et cetera.
Right, um, all right, anyone else have questions, other questions?
Do you, uh, do you address issues on the soils report? Last month, I wanted, I had a question on the soils report.
Yep.
Which we don't have a copy tonight, and I, I think I asked the acting planner to look at that with the engineer, I think it was referenced that they would look at it during technical review in the following couple of weeks, so who looked at the soils report?
Uh, I prepared the soils report, the, uh, actual soil test pits were done by situat surveys.
Yeah.
Uh, the water table on the western portion of the site is about five feet, as you progress through the middle of the site, going from west to east, it goes to about two feet, um, all these buildings will be, have no basements, so they're not going to have basements down to the water table, all our drainage facilities are set above the water table in accordance with DEM guidelines.
Is there any type of soils there that, that the, you or the planner see as cause for concern?
Only, only the ones that are in the wetlands, uh, the, the others, rest of the site, the developable portion of the site, you said the water table's between two feet and five feet, uh, the subsoil is, tends to be gravelly sands and loamy sands, which are actually conducive for foundations, uh, they actually drain fairly well, so the only problem areas are the wetlands areas.
I'm, I'm not an expert on soils, so I have to rely on the experts.
Yep, and, and, um, so, one of the things that, that we will be looking at for, that the TRC, the technical review committee met on this, and, and they, they did say final approval, um, would, uh, require the town engineer to review it and, and to approve it, I don't know that that's been done yet.
No, it's not, at this point, it's not done, it's for the master plan, it's done as.
It's got to be done for the preliminary.
Preliminary plan.
So. We've, we've actually done a lot more engineering at master plan stage, realizing there were some limitations with both East Greenwich Avenue and the site, to make sure that did work, and as I said, this will have to go to wetlands for approval prior to coming back to the town for.
So, so how, how important is, is the, uh, the maintenance, the yearly maintenance, how often is maintenance done by the homeowners association on COVID drainage, and just, just fill us in on, on the public, you know, on how maintenance should be done, because we do find homeowners associations that are formed, they don't maintain it, and it's a cause for concern.
Yeah.
Uh, it's always a cause, it's a concern, but, um, the catch basins should be cleaned once a year, just like the, this, the town does, cleaning out the sumps in the catch basins for any sand, um, the rest of the drainage system, the, the forbay, the, the sand filter, the detention basin, the primary maintenance there is mowing it, uh, two or three times a year and keeping debris out of it, uh, and that's the, that's the bulk of the maintenance, um, and as long as they keep the, the, and if the, the catch basins fill up, the water would flow over into that sediment forbay and then catch the sediments before it got to the treatment area, uh, which point, if it got too deep, it would clog up the pipe, they would have a problem in the parking lot, and they'd have to do something, but it wouldn't back up so that it would affect East Greenwich Avenue, it wouldn't back up, so it would affect neighbors, any backup in the system would affect the homeowners that are living there.
Thank you, but any other questions, uh, the engineer from?
Joe.
Yeah.
If I may step in, uh, as to Felix's question, any homeowners association, as has always been the case, has to be reviewed by me, the provisions in there about maintenance, the town is, can only step in when it becomes a situation that is being ignored by the homeowners association and becomes a, I'll call it a municipal problem, at that point in time, I have to make sure that the homeowner's responsibility is resp, the, the homeowners association is responsible for any costs incurred if the town has to step in, so, any, in your, your future votes, any homeowners association always has to be reviewed by me.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the technical, uh, review report too, is that Al be brought in to review any?
Everything, yeah.
Yeah, all the.
Yep, good.
What, what we don't know is how, how they comply yearly. We don't, we don't, we don't know the method of compliance, if the town, if, if they submit something to the town that says that they are in compliance, that's, we don't know.
Yeah.
We can, we can talk about that, including that as part of those, those agreements, right, so like an annual report approved by the town engineer.
Felix, by way of oversimplification, the problem is that until it becomes a public problem, it's a private problem.
Uh, Mr. Cronin, can you help answer that question a little bit? How do we, how will, how will we have some assurance that the homeowners association will, will step up to its responsibility?
Sure, so, um, I don't know, luckily, uh, in this case condominium association.
Yeah.
And in general, condominium associations are far more, uh, responsive on these items, because they are required by law to have annual meetings, acting boards, uh, buy homeowners' insurance for the buildings, plow the streets and driveways.
Yep.
Um, they're more active, um, so that the problems that arise have traditionally not been with the condominium associations.
Yep.
But rather with the homeowners association, where they're not required by law to hold those meetings and have those budgets and, uh, hold capital reserves for those reasons, so, uh, but to the planner's point, um, certainly, uh, in the past, uh, Mr. D Fiore and I have written in, uh, language in the, in the condominium declarations.
Yep.
Um, which state that the, the condominium board is going to be held responsible if the town has to spend any money on remediation, if the town has to take any action, that's not uncommon.
Yep.
And, um, certainly could be applicable here, this is a condominium of enough size.
Yep.
Where, uh, the cost would be spread, uh, in enough, uh, to enough homeowners, where uh, those kind of situations, uh, certainly could be handled by the town, they could collect, in other words, we don't do that kind of work, but, uh, you know, that's, so I, I think, in, in this case, uh, the condominium association is a good fit.
Good, okay.
In, in, in this particular case, that law, the law, Tom's law firm and I have worked together, so we both know what I demand, and they usually can, they comply with it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Morehead has.
So, one last question, one last question.
Yes.
When, when something happens in a condominium, and it affects a home, an adjacent homeowner's property, such as water or whatever, example, do they become liable for the remediation for that homeowner if, if their neglect causes something to happen to, 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 a, a neighbor's flooded out, example, just hypothetical?
So, two, really, two, two pronged, uh, approach there, right, because it affects another citizen of the town of West Wall, the municipality could insert itself, but at a minimum, as you suggest, uh, it's a negligence kind of situation where you can, you can get some compensation.
Your, your insurance would cover it.
Well, if it's groundwater drainage, I'm not sure, right?
Felix.
If the construction failed, then yes.
Felix, the problem there is that in, in most instances, it is a private matter, and, for example, if your property ran over to your neighbors, the town has nothing to do with it, this, this is, you, you have to, I don't want to go into it, but it becomes very, very fact specific before the town has any obligations in it, in normal circumstances, it is private between the two parties, in this case, the home, the condominium association and the next door neighbor.
Okay, so we'll, we'll hope that the maintenance and the yearly compliance is up to speed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One thing I did want to add is there is, um, part of the DEM requirements is for us to prepare an operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater system, uh, that gets approved by DEM, obviously be submitted to the town for their review and approval, and it also would be included within the condominium documents as part of their responsibilities as a condominium association, so, so.
Thank you.
So it is all spelled out.
Thank you, uh, anyone, any further?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, is, is it a possibility with, with the town of West Work or, or the authorities to, to mandate a, a maintenance contract in place for this, or is that stepping the boundaries? Al?
Um, overstepping the boundaries.
It's just, okay, this is covered by the, by state law for condominiums, I know.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I have some additional witnesses, Mr. Chairman, if, if the board is prepared to hear them.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Bannon is here to give you a brief summary on the traffic impact.
Okay, good, thank you.
I asked him to be, uh, allowed as an expert, he has testified before.
He has testified before. I'll entertain a motion to.
Motion is made to accept.
I'll second.
All, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Bannon, could you state your name and address?
Paul Bannon, B A N N O N, uh, 53rd Street, Berry, Rhode Island.
Your profession?
Uh, civil transportation engineering.
Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, okay.
Still a little, um.
All right.
For the record, we retained to, uh, conduct a traffic study, uh, or assessment for this project, um, as part of that effort, um, we reviewed the site plans that were developed by, uh, Mr. Morehead's office to make sure that the driveway was located in proper locations, um, for safe and adequate access, um, we reviewed the project area for existing land use, roadway geometry, horizontal, vertical curvature, uh, for site distance and safety, uh, we conducted a traffic county program, um, at the, uh, proposed driveway location that's opposite the 5, uh, 500, um, property, um, we, um, obtained record accident data from the local police department, determined if there were any safety concerns along the corridor, um, and then we assessed, um, future conditions, uh, that this project would, um, result in, uh, on the servicing roadways, um, as was indicated, uh, so 6.3 acre property, um, with 20 proposed residential units, uh, we're creating a four way intersection, uh, with the opposite condominium association, which is a proper design for, for an intersections that they align versus having them offset and create conflicts, this section of, of road, it's a, um, a major collector road, uh, 28 feet adequate widths in, in dimensions, there are no sidewalks or, or curving along the roadway, um, the The proposed development, relatively small residential properties don't generate high volumes of traffic. We would estimate that during the morning peak hour, we would have 10 total trips. And during the PM, 12 total trips. So in the morning, you'd have roughly six vehicles exiting the property and four entering. And in the PM, six and six. So that's a very low volume for a peak hour analysis when we look at the worst-case condition of traffic generated from the site along with the servicing roadways. We reviewed site distances at the driveway. There are no safety concerns or sightline restrictions. So we feel that, you know, relative to the use, it's a low-volume generator. It will not have an adverse impact on traffic operations and that the proposed design provides safe sightlines and access to the property.
Questions of, of Mr. Bannon?
Yeah, I had a question. In your analysis, did you, I understand that the impact of the, of the, of the development won't add, it's marginal, I guess, in terms of the, of the effect. But did you analyze the traffic that's currently there? Is it, is it currently at a threshold where maybe even like a minimum amount of, okay?
No, the, the main intersection, the worst intersection in the area is the Bald Hill Road intersection. That operates at level service C in the morning and D in the afternoon, which is an acceptable condition. We would, you know, generate one car every five minutes to that intersection. So it would be a negligible effect to that intersection. And our intersection would, you know, level service A with no delays.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Attorney Cronin, you have others?
Do you look at accident, the number of accidents in the area when you?
Yes, we obtained accident data from the Director of Public Police Department to review the accident reports. There were four accidents. They were intersection accidents at Surrey and I forgot the other one. But they were, you know, rear end type minor accidents, yeah.
Thank you. Attorney Cronin, do you have others?
I do. Mr. Joseph Lombardo completed the fiscal analysis report required at master plan. In summary, he found that the gain to the town would be about $130,000, 130, $376, right, per year based on the low number of schoolchildren essentially associated with two-bedroom condominiums. Mr. Lombardo is on Zoom and is available if you would like to hear any further clarification on those numbers.
I'd like to have him available because this is a public hearing when the, when the public steps up. We may ask any of your experts and yourself.
So I would ask Joe to, well, I would ask Joe to let Joe in on the Zoom call.
He's in, just got to turn his mic and camera on.
All right, all right, thanks, Joe.
Mr. Cronin afterwards, if you'd like, I can blow up that map on camera if anybody wants to review it. Just let me know at the end.
Sure, that would be helpful, thank you.
That would be helpful.
So Mr. Lombardo, if you can hear us, please join the meeting. Well, I will call him, Mr. DiMartino, and I will have him available for any questions.
Answer questions. We, we've accepted him as an expert witness. He, yeah, his camera's off.
He's going to self-mute. I'll, I'll give him a call right now.
Okay. Oh, there he comes, there he comes.
All right.
All right.
Mr. Lombardo.
Do we have to accept him again as a, as an expert witness?
I would appreciate it, yes.
Yeah, okay, so entertain a motion to accept Mr. Lombardo.
Motion is made to accept.
Second.
And no further discussion, all in favor? All right, Joe, go ahead.
Mr. Lombardo, if you could give a brief basis.
Hold on, Al wants to swear in.
Okay.
Mr. Lombardo, your name and address, please.
Felix.
Yes.
Tony.
The name is Joseph Lombardo. I have a home office at 7 Clamshell Drive in Westerly, Rhode Island.
Your profession?
I'm a professional land use planner and consultant.
Yes, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, all right.
Mr. Lombardo, I'd appreciate if you give a very brief presentation on the basis of your fiscal analysis. And then at the request of the chair, please stay available for the remainder of the public meeting. Does that agree?
Yes, it is. That's perfectly fine. Thank you.
All right, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pleased to be before you this evening via Zoom. I did prepare this report at the applicant's request. It's a standard format where we, we do two things. We estimate the cost to the community for municipal services and any educational expenses. And we also attempt to estimate the, the tax revenue to the community. As Mr. Cronin pointed out, there'll be a relatively good net revenue to the community on this project. We used an average sales price of these units per the applicant of $325,000. At your current tax rate, that will generate about $194,000 in revenue. Again, because these are two-bedroom condominiums on this setting, statistics and studies that I've done in the past, which would be a very low generator of school-aged children are actually showing, you know, perhaps just one student might occupy one of these units at any given time. The municipal expenses is based on 41 individuals living in the 20 units. And those expenses encompass $2,900. So we subtract that $62,900 from the $194,000 being projected as revenue. That's where we get the net number of $136,000. So from, from the perspective of revenue and expenses, this is a good positive run for the community of West Warwick. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I, I, I see in your report that you've analyzed a lot of different condominiums across the state and to get the, to identify the number of school-aged children.
Yes, I have.
And, and you, I assume you took that, the average of those?
Yes, those are all averaged across many years of compiling this data. And I think I even gave you a short addendum in here too, where some of the more recent ones, particularly one I did up in, in Smithfield. You know, these, again, it's, it's, and I also have a real estate background. So I have a little bit of information from, you know, my years of doing that as far as what the band is, or these types of units, or types of individuals typically are living in.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions of, of Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses who are available to answer any questions of the board or the public.
Okay, thank you. It's a public hearing, so is there anyone in the public that would like to, to address the? Please step up, step up to the mic, state your name, your, your address, and, and then Al's going to swear you in. Okay. Please state your name and address.
Eileen Ellis, 500 East Greenwich Avenue, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Please.
I have a few questions. Number one, I'd like to address that I live in the condo complex across the street. And in our condo docks, there is nothing, in our condo docks, about drainage. So this future condo development, if so approved, would have to have this in their condo docks if you wanted that for a yearly test or whatever, maintenance. It has to be in their condo docks. It is not in ours. Currently, we do have quite a drainage problem on East Greenwich Avenue. We have, East Greenwich Avenue at this location is at the bottom of a hill where drainage comes down and we have multiple, multiple amounts of water that comes down and in the colder months turns to ice. A member of our organization has talked repeatedly and repeatedly to a member of the West Warwick Board and nothing has changed. There has been, you know, we can't do this, we can't do that. Lovely man, very nice, but nothing has changed. So this new plat, this new development is going to encounter that as well before they even start. So I just want to make that known, that there is already a problem there with drainage. My second question is, the entire lot is six and a third acres. And you are using two and a third acres approximately for development. I'm wondering about the remaining four acres. And where the driveway and entrance into the location happens to be? Because that's four acres that is not used. And if you look at the property, the property towards the front, towards East Greenwich Avenue is lower than the property in the back, which seems to be up more of an incline. And I certainly have not looked at the land. I have no professional anything about this land. It is only what I see every day when I come out of my driveway. So I'm wondering about that. And because there is so much swampland and wetlands in that area, it is of concern to me as a homeowner across the street at 500 East Greenwich Avenue and I'm sure to others in our development, how this new development will affect the water table in this area. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to her comments regarding the condominium documents? Just so to, to let her know, at the time that condo was built and today, myself and prior planners have moved a long way in making sure that the condominium documents that are done today are not what they were done 20 years ago. We go, we go as far as the state law allows us to protect the town and the citizens.
Al, how many units are in, are in the condo that the lady just referred to?
I have no idea.
30, 30, there are 30 units. It was approved probably 30 years ago.
1980s.
All right, so 40 years.
Before my time.
Yeah, and, and the condominium laws may have changed since then. I suspect they have changed since then.
Considerably.
Considerably. Unfortunately, your condominium predates the requirement that condominium associations do this.
Right. My point was that our docks do not require us
Right.
to test the drainage each year. So the new property would have to have their condo docks reflect.
Yes, yes, and, and, and they will have to, and they're turning, someone else to come speak?
I was only like, I was only like 15 years old back then, right?
Or not born.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hold on, hold on a second. Felix, you had a question of the?
Oh. Just so, just so I understand something. So we're saying that water flow from another property could flow over this property. Water, water flow from another, from another adjacent property could, could have, could flow over. In, in other words, it could be water from another property that does not have condominium maintenance that affects an adjacent property such as this one.
Well, what I'm saying is.
My questions for the legal counsel.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not sure, Felix, what you mean. This, this project and any other project by state law cannot allow one foot more of water to go on to another piece of property that is presently done. That's, that's state law. They, so this piece of property cannot allow any, any increase in overflow. What goes on in any other piece of property, neither this board nor I can control.
I, I just like to have.
Clear, good.
She had a comment, I, I didn't want to cut her off.
Good, thank you.
Did you, did you want to add something?
No, you just mentioned that there was already an overflow from other condominiums. I don't know that. I don't.
My comment was there maybe, I'm not sure, I, you know, I, I can't say that there is, but there may be.
I don't know that. All the, all the residences in that area adjacent to 500 East Greenwich Avenue are private residences. There are no others beyond us.
My, my question was a hypothetical. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Please step up to the, to the mic.
Hi, my name is Norma Perry. I also live at 500 East Greenwich Avenue, the condominium complex across the street.
Okay. Mr. Perry, raise your hand.
Swear to tell the whole truth.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, there is a culvert across the street and it drains into, and the water goes across and freezes. And I've called the Public Works Department repeatedly and asked that a berm could be put in so that it would direct the water away from the street. But instead, what they did is they put a sign that said, "May be icy." Okay? Now, we had underground drainage 30-some years ago when they built these complexes. And they have since failed. So they cut off all the underground and now the gutters just flow into the grass, okay? In 2007, we had quite a flood in a lot of the units over there. So my point is, if this project is allowed, should they have some kind of way of making it better? Like they said, it wouldn't be any worse, but is there any way they could make it better so that the water wouldn't flow down the street by raising a berm or a little wall or something? So that's one aspect I want to bring up. Also, have they considered making it an over 55 community? So you wouldn't have any school-aged children, so the town would get even more tax benefit of it. Another consideration.
Good suggestion. I'd like to ask Mr. Moorhead, she was talking about a cul-de-sac, is that the, a, not a cul-de-sac, a culvert? Is that the same, is that the same culvert you would address in your presentation?
Probably. There is a, is a culvert right at the corner of our property. It comes from a couple of properties up. It's very shallow and discharges in front of our property, in front of the existing house, and runs onto the road.
The one you talked about.
To the extent we can, we're going to try to pick up that water, put it in a catch basin instead of having it just run down East Greenwich Avenue and then kind of filters. Some of it runs across the street, some of it runs into our property. Pick up what we can, direct it under our driveway until it's a small butt land on the property to get a little bit off of East Greenwich Avenue. That's about all we can do.
Thank you, thank you.
I think, I think, Mr. Moorhead, I, I know exactly what she's talking about. And I lived on East Greenwich Avenue for many years. Picking up a little bit, I, I think you're going to have no choice but to pick up a good bunch of it. And the reason why I say it is, if, if I know exactly where you are and your entrance into your property, that will back up to the entrance of your property, putting it icy condition at the start of your driveway. So I would think that what she's talking about, not only create a hazard for the road, it's going to actually create a hazard for you and your property, so.
That's correct. We're proposing a catch basin on the uphill side of our proposed driveway to pick up as much as we can, which we can only, one problem with East Greenwich Avenue is not a lot of crown in the pavement, it's pretty flat. So sometimes water runs on this side of the road and runs across and runs back. So we'll, we'll do what we can and we'll look at that even further as we go into the preliminary stage.
Very good, thank you.
Is that, is that where they, sir, is that where they feel most of the water is coming from? Is, is, is there, is it, if, if, if they looked at that and when there's heavy rainfall or?
Some of it comes from that pipe, but it's, it's a small pipe. So there's so much water that comes off that hill on East Greenwich Avenue that most of it just runs on top of the pavement, in, in the gutters and down the middle. Because like I said, there's not a lot of crown in that road, so sometimes it's just. So sometimes it's just kind of like a shallow sheet flow right down the road on heavy rain, so.
Thank you, Mr. Morehead. Another, you want to add to that, Mrs. Perry?
And sometimes that culvert fills with leaves and debris and gets backed up.
Yep.
And another thing I forgot to mention is, it's, it's a large piece of property and they're just building on a small amount of it. Could they maintain along the street so that we would have a grassy area? So there'd be less trash that would be thrown on the side of the road there?
It's, uh-
It's wetlands, it's wet.
It's actually-
Wetlands, they can't, they can't be touched, yeah.
And so we can't do anything to change it.
Can't change the wetland, so, okay.
Mark Bourget, three Megan Quett.
Can you say your last name again?
Bourget, B-O-U-R-G-E-T.
Al, you swear man, you're muted, Al, you gotta unmute.
What's his audio?
He's on, he's on-
I can read lips, Al, just go ahead.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. And for the record, I am the councilman for that area, but I'm not speaking as the councilman. I've lived in that area for twenty-one years. I live at the top of East Greenwich Avenue, the top of the hill. And there, water that we're talking about over there, that Mrs. Perry and everybody probably hear from the condominium association, that water, four or five days after a heavy rain, will still flow across that street. And it comes out right where you plan on putting your driveway. It comes right out of there. And it extends pretty far down with the traffic going, it just, you know, it drags it even further down. My sump pump on top of the hill will run for easily a week after really heavy rain. Yeah, because the water table there is so high. So that's the big concern, I think, with majority of the people is it's already a hazardous condition. And you said it's not gonna make it worse, but is there a way to make it better, as Ms. Perry asked? Not so much at your expense, but is it possible at all with the amount of water that actually comes down there? We don't care about when it's raining, I mean, it's horrible then. But that's not where our big concern is. Our big concern is the days afterwards, especially when the temperature drops. Because if it's raining, it's not freezing. So that, that's our biggest concern. The other question is, are these units gonna have basements? No, all right, because that's one of the issues that, over there. Yeah, that's one of the issues that their condos is to have basements, that's why a big water problem, so.
Okay.
So that was just my concerns as well.
Thank you, thank you. Others, any others? Okay.
Roger Richards, One Cross Bowl Lane, West Warwick Island.
Al, gonna swear in Roger Richards here.
I do, I can read them.
All right, okay.
I just have a couple of questions. I mean, it doesn't affect me that much, but what I'm really concerned about living in the area is, I believe this attorney was the attorney that represented Madison Ridge, is that mistaken? Is that the Madison Ridge area, was you the attorney?
That does not sound familiar.
One seventy-five Green Bush Road, were you the attorney for them?
Right.
Okay.
It wasn't called Madison Ridge.
Okay, so my concern is, are these condos gonna be fifty-five and over the sixteen units?
No.
All right.
It's twenty units. Sorry, you might, you might not have heard, we, we dealt with that. Yeah, that's okay, it's twenty.
Okay, is there, is there a?
It's not a fifty-five.
It is not an old.
Now, are they, is it the, so I understand he has property up on Edmond Drive? It is, that they're all rentals now? Those condos up there, we were for sale, the three-story condos. When you turn off the window and turn like the first left, that's Mr. Stedman Street, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Those are all rentals, I understand, they were never sold?
That is correct.
So are these gonna be rentals now? Because the housing market and condos not selling.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I think that's a little out of order. This board has no authority.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Right, we, we're a multifamily unit, whether it becomes a rental or a condominium, we can't.
Well, the only reason I ask is, when they represent Madison Ridge and they said those would be for sale and all of a sudden Madison Ridge flyers all for lease.
Mr. Richards, you're using a lot of speculation. You know, it's, 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 it's right now, it's approved to be, is what it's approved to be.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Just, just one question for the legal counsel. Al, can that be addressed? That, that's really not on the agenda. Can we even address a question like that?
Okay, sorry.
Hold on a second.
We have no authority over, we have no authority over that. So we have no authority.
Okay, like I said, that was the only concern I had was where the condos are and what happened, that's all. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Richards.
All right, and it appears like, appears that we've hit all of the public comment without, so I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that, Josh Barrett, second.
Second, Josh Barrett, second. So any further conversation about this? If not, let's vote.
I do have, I do have a question. And it's because I'm not familiar with the map. But in terms of the math, right, the development, you know, the area is six, six, over six acres. The development is about two. So is there any plans to, to develop, any long-term plans to develop the remaining?
It's wetland.
Yeah.
That's a, that's an easy one, so that's why we're all rushing to the mic. So if I could just move this, move this map just for a moment, yeah.
So Joe can see it.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm sorry, so, and I apologize, yeah. So if you looked at this area, that's the wetland.
Got it.
This is the wetland.
Yeah, that's an easy one, got it.
We're prohibited by law from ever building anything in there.
Understood.
Or even, like even chopping down a couple of trees and, you know, prohibited.
Okay.
So that's why Mr. Morehead and I were racing for the vote.
Understood, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, okay, we're ready to vote on closing the hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
And, all right, now I will entertain a motion, again, this master plan, that, that we get master plan approval, understanding that it's gonna go to the zoning board and in zoning, you'd be free to honor what we recommend in our master plan or ignore what we recommend in our master plan. So, so having said that, is there, and we have to incorporate the Rhode Island DEM preliminary determination as, as a condition of this? So is there a motion to, to approve with that recommendation?
I make motion to approve.
Tony, and there's our second?
I'll second it.
All right, Jessica seconded, any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Felix.
I just have concerns over what we heard about drainage and water flow and other properties. And how we're gonna, I'm gonna ask the acting planner, how are we going to put some language to express the concerns? Because I think if any development's gonna be done up there, any additional development's gonna be done up there, you obviously can't have a collection of water in front of new property. So I, as a board, how are we going to address that to give, to cover it and give some, give some satisfactions to questions that I believe are gonna pop up in the future?
It seems like Mr. Morehead, and that's the question I asked, he's absolutely right. Mr. Morehead's going to pick up a lot of that water in front of his area and then re-divert it, because he's gonna have no choice. I, I can't see him building his driveway at that, that end.
Yeah, but the way I see it, Felix, is they're gonna come back here for preliminary approval. And at that time, they're gonna have to address this issue in detail, specific plans approved by the town engineer.
Yeah, they'll have to have their permits from, from DEM as far as, I think, fifties and also whatever wetlands permits that they need.
I don't think DEM gets involved with that drainage issue though, do they?
They do.
That collection of water?
They do.
Yeah.
And also, our, our town engineer is gonna review any stormwater plans that they have before they will be able to come back to you.
All right, and then we'll get a chance to review what they came up with at that time in depth. And so we're looking forward to seeing you again, Mr. Morehead. Okay, so all in favor?
I just want to make sure that the, the residents and members of the audience fully understand.
Oh, good, thank you, that's true, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, although, are you involved, all those in favor of the, of the master plan going to zoning?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thanks, everybody, thank you. Okay, where are we, that was, okay, item four, Brothers Farm Major Subdivision, Four Crompton Avenue, Plat thirteen, Lot fifty-three, and seven sixty-five, Plat fourteen, Lot one. Master Preliminary Plan, Public Hearing and Decision. Is there someone here to represent the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have Joseph Brennan and Brian King that are in the audience, both have their hands up.
Okay, all right, are they part of, are they, Joe, do we know if they're the applicant? If they're gonna represent the applicant?
I don't know who they are.
Joe Brennan is the attorney and Brian King is the engineer.
Engineer, okay, so, all right, can we move that, Joe, let's go.
Bring them in.
Yeah, move them in, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Joseph Brennan on behalf of the applicant.
Hello, hello, Joe. So, you're, take it away, you're in charge here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The application that you have before you is for the Brothers Farm Major Subdivision located at Four Crompton Avenue, Plat thirteen, Lots fifty-three, and Plat seven sixty-five, Plat fourteen, Lot one. We're here for the master and preliminary plan combined hearings. We were here last month, seek that approval, so that's what we're here for today. Just to give a very quick overview of the, of the project, this is a project that was originally proposed all the way in the spring of two thousand and nineteen, so almost three years ago, where we were seeking a subdivision for a twelve lots. That would have required zoning approval, we went before the zoning board, we were denied. And since then, the plan has just been reworked to move us down to the ten lots. We are located in an R eight residential zone. So that way, we can meet all of the zoning lot sizes with all the dimensional criteria. And in addition, I think in your packets, the engineer, Brian King, did provide little renderings of where the locations of the houses would be and the building envelopes to even show those zoning dimensional setbacks of front, side, and rear, so that you can see that we will meet those as well, requiring no zoning approvals for this. We have received from Rhode Island DEM approval for the preliminary determination application. We've already worked with the West Warwick Sewer Review and that approval was received in May of two thousand and twenty-one. Kent County Water, we've received the approval from them October of two thousand and twenty-one. And now we're back here with this board, seeking the combined master plan and preliminary approval for that subdivision. As part of the project, it would be the creation of a new road. So it would be one, it's my understanding that the town would adopt and it would be built to the town's specifications and things that are needed and required in the town. One of them being, I believe it's forty foot right-of-way for the road size. With that being said, it is, it is a fairly simple application as a whole. I think, given as though we're combining master plan and preliminary, it may be more pertinent for the engineer to give some of his details on the project. So if we could have him brought in and then sworn in as an expert, we would appreciate it.
Mr. King, I'm gonna swear man. First, we gotta decide to accept him as an expert.
Joe, do you want to qualify him?
Yes, so.
I mean Joe Brennan.
I can do that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. King, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, can, can you state your name and your title and position with your company for the record?
Brian King from Crossman Engineering, civil engineer.
Thank you, Brian, and what degrees from school and sort of, where did you attend?
I'm a professional engineer and I graduated Roger Williams College.
In what year?
Oh, boy.
That's fine.
It's okay. Don't worry, I don't care. Nineteen eighty-five. Thanks a lot.
And since then, and since then.
I was, I was after the approval of that condominium that was up for the last year.
And since then, you've been active with your license? You haven't been suspended or received any complaints as a result? And have you testified before any other board?
I just, I'll entertain a motion that we approve, Mr. King, as, as, as an expert witness. I'll move that motion, Josh Barrett. Thanks, Josh. Okay, and all in favor? Okay, Brian, you're on. Before that, you gotta get sworn in.
King, would you state your name and address?
Brian King, Crossman Engineering, one fifty-one Centerville, Warwick, Rhode Island.
Your professional occupation?
Civil engineer.
Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and good evening. I'm Brian King, as mentioned, from Crossman Engineering. We have been working on this, this plan for a couple of years now. And really, the, the reason was just so we could look at different options to make sure that this was the best option for the property and to make sure that this option meets the zoning code. Do I have the ability to share my plans?
We, we have copies of them in here, so I don't know. If you want to turn to certain page numbers, we can do that.
Mr. King, do you have them available on your screen?
Yeah, can you share the screen?
Can I share the screen, yeah?
Yes, you can. Yeah, across the bottom of your screen, Mr. King, you should have a green arrow that says share screen on your Zoom.
Yes.
Okay, then you can put up your plans.
You can put up your plans.
Okay, can everyone see that? Yep, got it. Okay, great, so this is our plan set that we prepared for permitting.
We have a vicinity map that shows the general location. It's at the corner of Crompton Ave and Narragansett Ave. This property is a little under three acres in size. We have notified all the butters within two hundred feet. It's current land. Narragansett Ave, this, this is the intersection where the new road comes in. Narragansett Ave is a paper street that continues on to Hamilton Street. It meets Hamilton Street here, which, Hamilton Street is a portion of, that is also a paper street. It is paved down at the, the western end where it meets Tampa. Our proposal is for ten residential lots. They vary in size from eight thousand square feet to a little over eleven thousand square feet. Proposal is to extend Narragansett Ave approximately two hundred and fifty feet and we'll have a new road that's approximately five hundred feet to a cul-de-sac that has a forty-five foot radius. The right-of-way, as mentioned, is forty feet and the pavement width is thirty feet as per the town requirements. We're proposing a sidewalk on the south side of, of the roadway. It's a five-foot wide sidewalk. The roadway will have concrete curving. And the site today actually slopes in a northerly direction, which is from Cromptet Ave down in this direction here toward the, the left of the plan. This area here is, is all, it's, it's a sloped land, it's, it's wetlands down approximately two hundred feet from the property line here. And the Harding Brook, eventually, this wetland area is, it goes to the Harding Brook. This is our site layout plan here, where we, we do show the properties for all ten lots. We provide the size of the lots and we have a zoning table down here that identifies that each lots with in depth and size meet the zoning requirements. We're proposing stop signs and, and stop lines at the, at the intersection areas. This is our grading plan that we prepared. There is a, is a small high point in the road here with a little bit of slope that goes back to Cromptet Ave. The remainder, I should say, the remainder of the property does slope in a northerly direction. Our proposed road has catch basins and piping for a closed drainage system. So this high point here on Narragansett Ave will flow toward Crompton, but we're proposing some catch basins right at the intersection, collect that stormwater. That will be piped back. These catch basins will collect water from, from this portion of Narragansett Ave and it'll be piped down, down the road into the area here. It's a lot that's designated for a stormwater management system. We have a water quality structure in the roadway and then we have some graded basins here and also like an overflow pipe that's underground here. The system is designed to provide water quality, groundwater recharge, and to reduce the peak flows from the one-year to the hundred-year storm. When, when water does leave the system- When when water does leave the system, it will be less flow than what is on site today and it will go into the direction that it goes today, which is into the the northerly area. And you can see we have actually an approximate wetland and wetland buffer line designated. So this land really can't be built because it's it's, for the most part, all buffer area. We do have a approval from DEM for the stormwater design and this plan has also been reviewed by the town engineer and we have his approval as well. Each lot has a underground infiltration system in their backyard or side yard here. And the reason for that is that will collect the rooftop for their particular house and garage. And and it'll be it would discharge and drain into these underground systems. We did do soil evaluations for this property. And the soils are very consistent. We had a deep water table. We used the design level of seven feet, but actually I believe it's even deeper than that. It was a conservative number. It's a sandy, you know, gravelly gravelly sand type material for the parent material. So it was good training, good draining soils. As far as other utilities, we have, oh, I wanted to mention a couple of things about the the stormwater. Is there is a catch basin right here at the intersection of Crompton and Narragansett Ave? We have, when we were here a few years back, I guess there was some discussions that during the real heavy rains, this catch basin just can't handle the water that's in this area. So what we've also proposed was a pipe. It's like a high-level overflow. So before the water in this basin drains to the street level, it will get collected in a pipe and it's a separate pipe that runs down underneath the roadway and this is the paper street of Narragansett Ave and then eventually ties into the closed system at Tampa, which which just discharges to the brook down in this area here. So we're actually improving this this current situation by that that drainage overflow pipe. The other utilities would be water and sewer. Our proposed water has been approved by Kent County Water and we have an eight-inch water main that runs along the street and then we have an easement here and we're actually looping the system from Cromptin Ave to Tampa. So we have an eight-inch water main that is looped, proposing two hydrants, one approximately in this area and one approximately here. We've done fire flow testing and we've reviewed the fire flow tests with the the fire department and we've received their approval. Sewer, we have an underground sewer line that runs through the the development and collects the sanitary flow and then it also collect into the, there's an existing storm sewer system here that our proposed line will be piped into that. And we also have the town engineer approval on the sewer system design as well. Electric telephone that'll be underground. That's the the grading and drainage plan. And we have roadway profiles proposed in accordance with the regulations. Slopes are moderately, you know, gentle there. They average like from one and a half to to three percent, which really is is not that steep at all. We prepared a a soil erosion and sediment control plan, which would be for construction and it shows the limit of disturbance. It shows silo fence areas, you know, any potential stockpile areas. With the permitting that we did, we own, we had this plan, but we also have a booklet, soil erosion and sediment control manual that the contractor has to follow. But that's part of the DEM permit. And they actually have to do weekly inspections and and keep copies of those inspections on site during construction. In in the past, DEM can go out to the site during construction and and make sure that, you know, things are the way they should be. There's an approved set of plans on site and that weekly inspections have been done. So so that actually will have to be kept on site. That's part of the permit. Before construction starts, we do have to notify DEM and let them know that construction is starting. Getting back to the, since we're talking about water, getting back to the drainage system, this site also does have a long-term operation and maintenance plan for the drainage system, which is a requirement for this system to be inspected on a yearly basis. As requested during the initial master plan presentation, there is a condominium association that will be prepared. Those documents will, I'm sure will be part of the sale for any of the lots. And the condominium association is required to maintain the drainage, catch basins and piping in the street and in this this drainage system here. The other parts of the roadway, the pavement, that would be become a town road. That's the intent.
Just a question, Ryan. You you said a condominium association. I think, I believe this is not a condominium.
I'm sorry, homeowners association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, homeowners association.
Understood, understood, okay.
And then you have prepared some details for construction.
Good.
That's our our plan set. The homes will be three to four bedrooms. I think it's a mix of three or four bedrooms. That's what we have designed them for. And
Thank you. I want to commend you for taking steps to reduce existing water accumulation with the the added storm drain and the and the line to move water past your development up to another place to alleviate the problem. Thank you for that. I think that's wonderful. Any questions?
Yes.
Questions or comments?
Where where technical review met on February fifteenth? There's reference in here to applicant shall examine current drainage condition on Crompton between Tiffany and Narragansett and develop a resolution to the condition if feasible. Is it feasible?
So it it looks like that's what they're proposing.
I think that's what's
He's saying that they're going to do that that drain line that's going to go straight down.
Yeah.
Narragansett. So they they did do that.
I think you, Brian, I I don't have the words in your mouth, but did you actually address that?
Well, Tiffany is down here. We're actually not aware of any drainage problems with Tiffany because I believe that as well runs which is to the to the left of the plan. But they were meaning that, you know, Tiffany connects with, I guess, Crompton, so maybe.
Yeah, and so you added.
We are alleviating that that issue here, yes.
Crompton, right, okay.
Right, so where where technical review refers to Crompton, on Crompton between Tiffany and Narragansett, you have, you've addressed that?
Yes.
Sounds like you asked yours.
Okay.
Any, anyone, other questions? So you okay with this? Anybody else's questions? I think this is pretty good. I like the plan. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Is there anyone here to speak in the public on this application? Actually, before we do that, hold on. Joe Brennan. Are you done with your presentation or do you, are you going to present present something else?
We are all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go on up. There you go.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, all right, Al. Brian, can you stop your your screen sharing?
You say your name and
Okay, good.
My name is Jeff Byrd. My address is Four Crompton Ave, West Warwick.
Okay.
Raise your right hand.
B Y R D, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. So I just, I came here tonight because I received a certified letter in the mail and it specifically named my house, which is Four Cromptin Ave. So just a couple of questions. One, this is the first of it. I've heard of this. So if it was brought to somebody's attention in the area before, I've only heard of it when I received the certified mail.
Okay.
And I just, my question is, it specifically, and we even contacted our neighbors and specifically names my address, like my house. So I want to make sure, or I just want to know how this specifically affects, besides the fact there's going to be a house right beside my backyard, which I'm not that thrilled about, but how this affects my my property.
You, I'm sure you got the notice because everyone within two hundred feet of the property being.
I only got the certified mail letter.
Had to get certified.
Yes.
Be notified, certified.
Just a couple of days ago. Yep, a few days ago.
The hearing is coming up. So that's why you got it and that's why it's got your name on it because your property is within two hundred feet of this property.
Okay, because like I said, because our neighbor also had one that's, and she was a different location and specifically staler address too, so.
Yeah, yeah. So if you're both with, if you're within two hundred feet of the boundary of this property.
Okay.
Then you would get a certif- certified letter.
Okay.
Letting you know this was coming up.
Okay, that's fair.
That's what, that's why you got that. Do you have any other questions?
No, I just want to make sure nothing was impeding on my property. That's all. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Nick Colombo. I live on forty-six Audrey Drive.
Raise your right hand.
Yep.
So I tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, okay.
All right. So I was here the first time they had this meeting.
Yeah.
And I saw the first plans with, actually I thought it was fifteen houses. And it got cut down now down to ten. So I have a particular interest in this because I own the vacant lot, which would be, I don't have, I don't have a print in front of me.
Okay, okay.
So.
What's the question? Thank you.
First of all, is there any any way to access any of this stuff? All these new prints is, what's the purposes of this meeting? Is it going to be like after today going right forward to it? And then.
This is for preliminary approval, but this is where a lot of the engineering is presented and
Okay, yeah.
But there is a final approval process that goes after this. So there's another another opportunity. But most of the details need to be addressed in this, at this stage.
Okay.
So I had a question. Just clarification. Is it plat thirteen lot five seventy-seven and?
This one here? Lot five seventy-five?
Yep.
Okay, plat thirteen lot five seventy-five.
Yeah, yeah, plat thirteen. And, okay.
I mean, quite frankly, to be honest, I don't really like the development back then, but it does benefit me because that was a, obviously a nice open lot.
Right.
With it being an HOA, if I so choose to tie into it, could I?
It's going to be a town, so that, yes, I believe so.
Tie into what?
Gas, whatever they plan on doing.
So the, they're, they're all going to be using the the town utilities.
So then I should be able to.
You'd be able to, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
The town utilities are going to go right by the front of your lot.
That's what it looks like.
The drainage is all going to be on private property and privately owned and maintained. So that's a, you know, you can talk.
That would have to be something with them.
Work it out with them.
Yeah.
The the other utilities are.
Utilities are.
And the last thing is, there was, it was tough to see back there about where there was wetlands, maybe. Was that, so now to the right of my property, that other remainder of the farm, is that planned on being built or is that somewhere down the line or?
It's not part of this.
Not part of this.
Part of this one for sure.
Okay.
Because what what this looks like is totally.
Yeah, just in that one area.
Plan developed, right?
All right.
Okay.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments?
Joe, I have one person on Zoom.
Okay.
Bill Novy should be joining you.
Okay, thank you. There you go. What happened to you? Bill, okay.
Hello.
Hello, Bill.
Good evening.
We got to swear you in first.
Please state name and address.
William Novy, fifty-five Narragansett Avenue, West Warwick.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Well, I did provide a written letter to the planning board today indicating some issues and concerns that I had. Many of the issues and questions I had were answered by the presentation. But one particular is issue I'm concerned about is this new pipe, drainage pipe, that's going to be installed to help alleviate the flooding problem at the intersection of Crompton and Narragansett. And my my first question is, we will not know how efficient and effective it is until it's installed. And so that's one concern I have. How do we know it will be effective in eliminating that problem or at least decreasing it? And the second question I have is who will be responsible for maintaining that drainage system once that subdivision is in place?
It'll be, the homeowners association for this development will be required to do that.
So if if we as their neighbors have an issue or problem with water that continues to collect in that intersection, we have to go to the homeowners association and ask them to deal with it?
I, Al.
Wants to address this. So I don't know, like, I think that the the infrastructure installed at the at the intersection would not be under the purview of the homeowners association. It would be the town. But Brian, do you want to address this?
Brian, yeah, go ahead.
That that is correct. That it's a separate twelve-inch drain line that stays within the Narragansett Ave and Hamilton Ave right of way. And it collects the water that that would be in that catch basin at the intersection of of Crompton and Narragansett and brings it down to Tampa. So that's a separate line. It stays in the the current right of way of the town and that would be the towns. All of the other catch basins and closed drainage system, that would be the homeowners association.
Got it.
Mr. Chairman, if it's in the town, one of the, and I would say should be a stipulation and naturally before final approval, it would have to be approved by the town engineer and the sewer department or whoever else, the water department, whoever else, it has an effect on. And once they have approved it, then it becomes their responsibility.
Actually, they have, they have reviewed the plans that do have that pipe shown.
That's, that's right. The the town engineer has has looked at it, but I think maybe Al was talking about before final approval, you know, we'll get sign-offs from the, we'll, we should require a sign-off.
Mr. King, I have a question. I think it pertains to that that particular drain on the map, this page C six. It says that enter catch basin and install high-level outlet pipe and manual slide gate on pipe. Slide gate to remain closed and only open by the town during emergency of flooding. Is that, so if I'm assuming this correctly, that it would, it would be closed all the time unless the town so so chose to open it to divert that water on Crompton Avenue. Is that correct?
That that's correct. And I believe that was, that was discussed during the previous meetings.
So there wouldn't be any water alleviation on a regular rain rainfall event. It would still maintain be the same. Unless, unless the town so so thought that.
That can be, that can be removed, but that that was discussed, you know, during the earlier, earlier meetings.
I just wanted to clarify, you know, so it's on record that people understand that that would be a gate there that would be normally closed. So even once the development is done.
I have one comment about that. And that, if that's the situation, I don't see the town running out here when there is flooding. I have called many times when there is and nothing's been done to to eliminate the problem. So and yet, and the concern I have is there's going to be increased traffic flow from those homes through that intersection that already has a drainage problem. So if you're looking at this as a planning entity, I think dealing with that problem first, dealing with the telephone pole that sits in the middle of the paved roadway, which I provided you a picture of, and dealing with the lack of sidewalks to provide for the safety of pedestrians, skateboarders, people walking their children and dogs and bicyclists on that intersection, there is a tremendous amount of traffic of that nature. And all of that, I think, needs to be addressed in this planning process rather than dealing with the issues later on.
So Brian, Brian, Brian King, question. You just. You just mentioned that this was from a previous plan, this note about having that gate closed.
It was in previous discussions as far as I understand.
Okay, is there a is there an engineering need for it to be closed?
No, not necessarily. And and what we could do is we we could work with the the town engineer and they they decide we would certainly be willing to comply with.
Okay, so.
What is in general, what is the purpose of that? In general, just so we. Why, why, why would that be used?
The gate?
Yeah.
Yes.
I guess it it would it would just alleviate any any flooding. But if this is if this flooding occurs very frequently, then then I think may would be a good idea not to have that gate. Not have it closed.
Yeah, I think I agree with that.
So if that gate is if that gate is not maintained, that in 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 many years down the road, it may not be functional?
We're not gonna let them do the gate anyway, Felix.
Okay.
Forget the gate. We're gonna have the town engineer approve it, but I don't see any value to having that gate. Tony, thanks for pointing out. Okay. So this I don't see the value unless you come back for final and you can point out, Brian, there's a real need for this having this gate. Then we can consider it then. But it but we'll ask the town engineer to that is because he has to approve this plan yet anyway. And and we're making that a condition on the final approval. And and then if if it's necessary, then we'll need an explanation as to what makes it necessary. Okay.
Fair, fair enough.
Does that fall under the homeowners association?
No.
No, that's.
That was in the town.
Right.
That was in the town. All right.
Al, just one question on the homeowners association. Previous applicant, we talked about condominium association. Obviously, homeowners association is different. So there does is there anything in state law that talks about homeowners associations or only condominium associations?
Homeowners are not as restrictive as condominium. Theoretically, they have the same obligations as condominium associations. The problems with the homeowner homeowners association, as Tom Cronin pointed out earlier, in general, they're not as they're not as formal as condominium associations. You live in a condominium association and it is really governed by a tight set of rules. But a homeowners association, I own my piece of property. You own your piece of property. And if the thing is bothering you, well, I'm not gonna spend money on it. Whereas in a condominium, it's a lot different. Enforcing, I'll be very honest with you, that enforcing the rules against homeowners associations is more difficult than condominium. I was gonna state to you, when you're ready to take a vote, that if you do approve it, any homeowners association has to be a repro reviewed by and approved by me. And we make them as tight as we can.
Yeah, yeah. And one of the stipulations from from the the technical review committee was that language for the homeowners association needs to be approved by the attorney. So you you got it, Al. It's 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 on your plate. Okay.
I I do see where you're there's reference to documents related to proposed homeowners association and their maintenance obligations.
Shall be provided.
Provided the town planner for approval. So there are maintenance obligations encompassed in the homeowners association, correct?
Yes, there are. It's not a question of putting them in the agreement. It's a question of enforcing them.
Yep, yep. Okay. All right. And it shall it shall be approved by planning and zoning legal counsel. Okay. All right. Any other?
I I had a question just following up on what Mr. Novy had mentioned, referenced a a comment about the sidewalk. Mr. Knowy, what was the what was your comment about the sidewalk again?
Well, there's an awful lot of foot traffic, bicycle traffic, exercisers, et cetera, up and down Narragansett and Crompton at all hours of the day. And there are no sidewalks presently. And with the increased volume of traffic through that intersection, it just concerns me that they're gonna be exposed to increased traffic through an intersection that isn't designed to carry that amount and has drainage problems that have existed for years.
Mr. Novy, I I don't, I mean, we we just seen a we had a previous.
I saw the East Greenwich.
Yeah. And and I can't, I can't imagine that what he spoke about having as many units he has that would see more than six cars or I I don't think we're gonna see an influx of a lot of traffic out of this this development. I mean, Mr. King, I mean.
These are three and four bedroom homes.
Yeah.
As opposed to two bedroom condominiums.
That's true, King.
So I'm 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 assuming at least two cars per per home. And I don't know how many trips per day each of those cars.
Maybe Mr. King can can give us a little insight on.
I I think that would be apples and oranges.
Okay, let's let's see what Mr. King.
Well, the size of this division didn't warrant a traffic study. Yeah, just looking at logically, I guess. You know, if you have 10 homes, say, two cars per home, the peak, the peak hour in the morning where they would go to work usually is between, you know, seven and nine. That if you if you were to look at 20 cars over a two hour period, that's like one car every six minutes.
Yeah. That's not.
Are over. So.
If you if you if you do the multiplication, there's nearly 30,000 cars passing through that intersection that don't do it at the present time. Per year.
I'm not sure if there's 30,000.
Well, if you do 80 per day times 365 comes to 229,200.
All right. Okay.
That's per year.
Yeah, per year.
Oh, per year, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Novy. Any I appreciate your comments.
Okay, one one other question. Is there anything you folks can do in regard to that telephone pole in the middle of the paved roadway?
Brian, I'm familiar with I'm not familiar with exactly.
I provided a picture of it today. That's in the intersection of Crompton and Narragansett.
Yeah, actually, that that pole would would have to be coordinated with the utility company because that is pretty close to the intersection. So that's something that would have to be done with this project is coordination.
Well, I think if we're talking about increased traffic in a deficient defective intersection, that just has a problem that I think need to be mediated.
Chairman, that sounds like a council problem.
Yeah.
Okay, is that considered a safety issue?
I I to me, it looks like the pole is where the sidewalk should go, to be honest. Okay, it's not in the middle of the street. It's right on the on the side of the street.
I don't.
But it needs.
I don't think this board can this board can make a decision.
We can't make that decision.
It looks like David Goslin's in the the chat. He had commented that the town can petition National Grid to remove it.
The town competition national. Okay.
I I just want to clarify. I I was talking about the utility pole on our side of the street. So I'm not sure pull on the other side of the street. And if that's the case, then then we would have nothing to do with that. So I asked for the confusion on my end.
Yeah, the town council president just just put it in the chat, Mr. Novy, that he can we could probably do something townwide. The board can't mandate it.
So so that is not relevant to this project? Is that correct?
That's.
Yeah, I don't know what utility pole is is the one in question, to be honest with you.
On the southwest corner of that intersection.
That that is correct, Felix. It's a council.
We have nothing to do with that poll. Yeah.
It's a council.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Novy.
Thank you.
And okay, as Joe, do we have anyone else that has their hand up? Yes. Come on back up. Okay, you already sworn in, so.
Jeff, yeah, just really quick. Also, too, just so you guys know, there's no stop signs whatsoever at that intersection. And with the increased traffic too, it can make it pretty dangerous.
There is one on this pole.
No, I don't think so. That's different pole. At that, yeah, that's different. At that intersection of Narragansett and Crompton and where that paper road's gonna be too, there's no stop signs at all there. Just want to bring that up.
Thank you.
That's the jurisdiction of the traffic committee.
Yep, okay.
Major Asher.
Okay, thank you. All right. I I think no one else is waiting. That's I again entertain a motion. Are we close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Would I be able to make one more request, please?
Yes.
Would it be possible to request that this be reviewed administratively for the final plan approval?
You can request, but I think the answer will be no.
Doubt it now.
Okay, sorry. So so we're gonna close the public hearing. Joe, Joe made a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Seconded, Josh Barrett.
Josh Barrett seconded. All and no further discussion about keeping the public hearing opening open, Alan. So let's vote. Close in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's public hearings closed. The request was made that final approval. Well, first, let's approve this. Okay, and then we'll talk about final approval. The all right, so we have some conditions that were provided through the from the TRC that stipulations for approval of the final plan. Okay. And and we can we put this just in the minutes what's what's been approved?
We we can. We should. Yeah, we should read them.
I'll read them. Okay. All right. So following conditions are stipulations that we're considering for the approval. Okay. That all drainage shall be maintained by a neighborhood association, that an annual drainage inspection and report shall be submitted to the town engineer and or building official for review and compliance with routine maintenance of the drainage system. Documents related to the proposed homeowners association and their maintenance publication shall be provided to the town planner for approval. That the language for the utility easement between proposed lots eight and nine shall be approved by the planning and zoning legal council. That the developer shall be required to pay a fee in lieu of land dedication, which shall be $2,500 per dwelling at the time of application for a building permit as required per Land Development Regulation, section 17 dash 21 E. Fees in lieu of land dedication. That traffic analysis, which shall result in no adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and degradation of the existing traffic in the area, shall be performed by a registered professional engineer and that the applicant shall examine the current drainage condition on Crompton Avenue between Tiffany Avenue and Narragansett Avenue, I think, and develop a resolution. I think you've already done that, but it's we're still leaving it in as a condition. And and, okay. And then there are other things for building. We're not worried about that. So they get final plan approval. Those are the stipulations that that we would incorporate. Any other questions or comments?
So was there a meeting of the of this applicant with the with with the homeowners? I know initially there were.
I think some of them. These people are all here for the next year. So I don't I don't know. There's not an obligation to me with the neighbors. Okay, so have you heard the stipulations? Is there is there a motion to approve it with those stipulations in place?
I'll move that motion.
Thank you, Josh. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further conversation? If not, we'll vote on that. All those in favor of granting this preliminary approval subject to the approval of the final plan with the stipulations that were read into the record? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The request was made to have the final approval be done administratively. Is there anyone that wants to make that approval and turn that into a motion to approve?
No.
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 We can make a motion to approve just so we can vote against it, I suppose. But as you as you can see, there's not there's not a strong feeling that we should do this.
Mr. Chairman, since the request has been made, I suggest for purposes of the record that a motion be made to approve and it be denied.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So is it who who's willing to make a motion to approve? So that we can vote it down.
Motion is made to approve.
Thank you, Felix. Second?
I'll second it.
All right, Jessica, thank you. All in favor?
No.
No.
All opposed? No, no. So it's it's opposed. So you're gonna have to come back, Brian. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, now, here we are. Item. Item five, June Carr subdivision. 146 Coeset Avenue and Carlson Circle assesses plat 13 lot 599 preliminary plan, public hearing and decision. Is there someone here to?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may, before the hearing begins, I'm asking if Mr. Jason Lachaty is in the audience.
Yes. Yes, he is, Al.
Mr. Lachaty, could you please take the podium? Mr. Lachaty, you are a member of the West Warwick Town Council, are you not?
Correct.
And you have at discussed this matter with me. And at my advice, before you appeared this evening, you sought permission from the Rhode Island State Ethics Commission, did you not?
I did in writing.
And that request was because you felt that you, as an individual, as opposed to a member of the town council, had an interest in this matter. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And did the Ethics Commission approve your appearance before this board as an individual and not as a member of the town council?
Yes, and the decision can be found in the clerk's office.
And did the and did the commission impose certain restrictions upon your behavior as a member of the town council?
Yes, the restriction is I cannot appoint or reappoint anyone on the planning board.
Since that time.
So until I don't know.
Since that time, there have been appointments that came up. Did you take any part in the discussion or decision regarding those appointments?
No, I recuse myself on each one.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I asked that Mr. Lachaty take the stand so that that could be placed in the record to clarify that he is here with Ethics Commission approval.
Okay, so so do we want to take the letter that's at the clerk's office and and incorporate it into the minutes of this meeting?
I don't think you have to. He's he's testified.
Okay, good.
That he has.
Great, okay. Thank, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Jase. Okay. All right, anyone here to speak in favor of this application?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thomas Cronin, 1070 Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the applicant.
Okay.
So this is preliminary plant.
Yep.
We have been before this board for master plan.
Yep.
This is AP 13 lot 599. Zoned R8. It has a house address of 146 Coeset Avenue, West Warwick. It's at the top of the hill across the street from Fresco's. You know, that's behind the gas station. I don't know. All right, it's located in primarily a residential area, single family homes. Those homes are located on Carson Circle, Denitus Street and Coeset Avenue. We had quite a discussion in our office among our West Warwick residents about how to say Denitus, and that was what we came up with. So I hope that I hope that's correct. The only budding commercial use is the Coeset Sun Gas Station and Service Station located to the south of this property along Coeset Avenue. We've reviewed the findings of the technical review committee and planners notes. We have no objection to those notes. We ask that be adopted by the board. We have no objection to those notes. We ask that be adopted by the board and included in the record. So this proposal is to divide two point eight one acres into ten lots. Seven lots for new home construction, single-family homes. Two lots for the required drainage, and then one lot for the existing home at one forty-six, uh, Coeset Avenue. Ten in total, seven new house lots is the focus of the application. This is a conforming subdivision. It conforms to the, to the Rhode Island state law. It conforms to the, uh, West Warwick zoning regulations and the West Warwick subdivision regulations. There are no waivers requested from this board. There are no variances required from the zoning board, and there are no special use permits required from the zoning board. Uh, when I say conforming, I mean, in our eight zone, the requires, requirements of an R eight zone are met by our design. So we have lot areas of eight thousand square feet for the single-family homes. Lot width of at least eighty, lot depth of at least a hundred, and lot frontage of at least seventy. The setback requirements are met with regard to the single-family homes. So, front setback twenty-five, interior side ten, corner side twenty-five, and rear yard twenty-five for the single-family homes. Lot coverage is approximately nineteen percent where twenty-five percent is allowed. So as part of this subdivision, a public road will be constructed. It's a cul-de-sac, approximately three hundred and forty feet long, sidewalks on both sides, and an entrance on Carlson Circle. The seven new homes will have driveways which access the new road. The, uh, the preliminary plan application shows some detail, like landscape design and street trees and things like that, but I'll leave that to, uh, the engineer, Mr. Tim Bean, to discuss those plans. Uh, the project has public utilities, so West Warwick Sewer, Kent County Water. There is an intersection proposed, uh, at the end of the new street along Carlson Circle, and a stop sign and appropriate stop markings on the road have been proposed. Uh, the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management has issued the, our RITD's permit, uh, for our design. Uh, I'm definitely not gonna get into that. That's not my area. I have several witnesses to present this evening, uh, for the board, but be, just in case, I, uh, don't wrap it up at the end. It's the applicant's request that, if approved, final be handled administratively. So, uh, in order to avoid any unnecessary redundancy, I ask that Tim Bean be allowed to testify as the project engineer, and I ask to be qualified as an expert. Thank you.
Uh, good evening.
Oops.
Yes, uh, for the record, my name is Timothy Behan, professional engineer with the firm Commonwealth Engineers and Consultants in Providence, Rhode Island. I've been an engineer for, I believe, what, thirty-three years. Graduated URI nineteen eighty-eight as a civil engineer. Got my masters in civil engineering in ninety-two from URI. Been a consultant since nineteen eighty-eight, working for various civil engineering firms, and I'm here tonight presenting the project as the site engineer.
I'll move the motion for approval.
I'll support it. Second? I'll second.
Okay, to all in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Bean, would you state your name and address, please?
I look in, oh, oh, up there. I'm sorry about that. Uh, my name is Timothy Behan. Uh, address is, uh, four hundred Smith Street, Providence, Rhode Island.
Would you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Just to summarize the existing conditions again, it's a two point eight one acre parcel. There is some existing structures on there. If you'll notice, the existing, uh, residence along, um, Coeset Avenue. And that residence also has, uh, two structures behind it, two garages, one off to the left side, one off to the right side. Uh, the up top is, uh, generally a cleared grass lawn area. Uh, and there's a couple, uh, chain link fences up on top of the hill. There's no wetlands on the subject site, and we're proposing a subdivision. There's a total of nine or eight new house lots. One of them's for the existing house, and seven of them are for the proposed houses. There's two drainage lots. Now I'll get into that detail in a little bit, and, uh, the subject site has adequate and physical access, uh, via that three hundred and forty foot long cul-de-sac. The seven new house lots have, uh, frontage along that. And, uh, that's associated with a thirty foot wide paved roadway which meets, uh, town standards. There's sidewalks on both sides of the street. Uh, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of the road for the turnaround, and the right-of-way meets the town standard of forty feet wide. The development is in compliance with the standards in the zoning ordinance. And, uh, I'd like to get into the details of the stormwater system. If you'll notice, there's two drainage lots. Each one of those lots will have a stormwater feature situated on them. The details are provided in the detail sheets. And, uh, the drainage from those lots travel down and tie into the existing, uh, drain pipe, which is, uh, located to the, the bottom of that sheet. Uh, each of the proposed houses is gonna be serviced with, uh, rooftop runoff that goes into a drywell system. And, uh, we've coordinated this, uh, stormwater design with the town consulting engineer, James Jeremian Associates, and also the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. Uh, we have received the DEM permit for the stormwater of the project and also for the soil erosion control permit. Uh, the soil erosion control plans are within the plan set as well, and once again, that's been reviewed by the town engineering consultant and DEM. Uh, we have a proposed, uh, public sanitary sewer system extension. It's a standard gravity pipe, so there's no pumps involved. And that, once again, has been reviewed and approved by the, um, uh, the town consulting engineer and the, the, the wastewater, uh, district. And we have their approval letter. Uh, the plans have been reviewed and approved by the fire department. We coordinated the design. Uh, they asked for the one new hydrant, and that's gonna be located at the entrance of the subdivision. Uh, we have their approval as well. Uh, public water is proposed. We're proposing to extend the water system into the development and tie it down into Coeset Road to make a loop system. And that, um, water system has been reviewed and approved by the Kent County Water Authority, and we have their permit in hand. And lastly, I'd like to talk about the entire plan set. The entire plan set, the engineering, uh, plans and the stormwater calculations have been reviewed by the town engineering consultant. We've, uh, addressed their comments, and, uh, we are all set on their end. So, and also there's a, a landscape plan found in the plan set to indicate the proposed street trees and plantings around the stormwater feature. So if there's any engineering questions you'd like, I'm here to answer them.
I, yeah, the, uh, onsite drywall detail, uh, indicates that the drywall will, for the roof leaders, is to be installed with a two-foot distance between the wall and the system.
Yes, we have test holes shown on the plan, and one of the conditions of approval was to ensure that that two-foot separation was met. We've added the note to the plan set, and during construction, that will be implemented.
Any questions? Anyone else? Charlie Cronin, is somebody else?
Yes, I, I'd ask the board, uh, allow, uh, Mr. Edward Pimentel, uh, to, uh, testify this evening, and I'd ask to be qualified an expert. I believe you've already qualified, uh, Mr. Pimentel, uh, once this evening, which sort of streamlined things.
Actually, I was involved in the first project, but I didn't testify tonight.
Say, say, trying to sneak him in. Before that, we gotta get you qualified. So what, why do you think you're qualified?
I have both a bachelor's and a master's in urban planning from the University of Rhode Island. I've been an urban planner throughout the state of Rhode Island, seven municipalities in Massachusetts for the last approximately thirty-three years. I've, uh, also, uh, been a consulting planner. I've testified in all thirty-nine cities and towns throughout Southeastern Massachusetts and all the superior courts, and I'm a nationally certified lawyer.
I second him.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Raise your right hand. Please state your name and address.
Edward Pimentel, that's P as in Paul, I M E N T E L. Trans and Rhode Island.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. It's, it's been a while. I submitted my initial report, neighborhood analysis, everything back in August, uh, initially. I don't know if you have that with you, so I bought extra copies if you want. Can I approach? In the, in the folders is my, uh, my report, uh, the neighborhood analysis, to show, thank you, to show compatibility consistency. To avoid redundancy, I think what I'll do is, I'll go to the very end. That has the, uh, requisite requirements of standards for the granting of a subdivision, and then I'll work back as to my conclusions. So, several of these, the, uh, project engineer has already addressed. They're, they're engineering-related. But the, um, the ones that would be, uh, pertinent to my field of expertise, number one, and this is pursuant to the West Warwick subdivision regulations, section seventeen dash eight subsection A required findings, number one. Each subdivision shall be consistent with the requirements of the town's comprehensive plan. I went and read your entire comprehensive plan and paying pertinent attention to your land use and housing elements. Um, and there's quotes throughout the report, but most importantly, in regarding doing a density analysis and the comprehensive plan, and paying attention to the future land use map and the density requirements. This property is owned R eight and pursuant to the, uh, the flum of the future land use map, which is the anticipated vision of how the entire community should be developed. It's a density of four units per acre, which, uh, based on the current acreage would be approximately eleven to twelve units. We're not even asking to reach or achieve the full density. We're asking to add new seven, seven new home sites in addition to the existing home set of eight units. So we're not even ax, asking to maximize what, what otherwise be permitted under the comprehensive plan. Number two is each proposed lot in the subdivision shall conform to the standards and provisions of the town zoning ordinance. I know it's been stated over and over tonight already, but I felt, look, can't, can't help but be, do overkill, so. On page seven fifteen and eight of fifteen, what I did for the board's edification is I went through the entire zoning ordinance and applied every possible dimensional criteria that could be applicable here. Setbacks, coverages, overall heights, and laid it across all the lots, all eight lots.
I'm gonna take you to do this.
It took a couple of weeks to do this. The, the, the neighborhood analysis was really where it takes, I looked at analyzing everything. The point being is, I know there was concerns. I'd already been told there was concerns from the neighborhood, so I wanted to make sure I could come before this board and speak confidently about compliance with the zoning regs, subdivision regs, comprehensive plan, and neighborhood compatibility. So, the two tables go through both your zoning ordinance and your subdivision regs. Because in the subdivision regs too, there are criteria that pertain to how these lots should be configured. Angles, lot depth, a lot width ratio. I analyzed all of it. It's all on the tables. And so I can, I feel pretty confident, and I could go through the report if you wish, but I feel pretty confident in conclusion that, um, we meet all of the pertinent subdivision regulations. We comport with all of your town's standards, and we're, uh, consistent with the comprehensive plan, and if you look at the neighborhood analysis, we are compatible with the character of the surrounding, uh, blocks and parcels.
According to this, you looked at fifty-two separate parcels?
That's correct. I looked at, I went, I know that typically is a two-hundred-foot radius, but that ends up cutting through the middle of parcels, so I take every parcel into consideration and the blocks surrounding, so I even go beyond the two-hundred-foot radius. And if the board wants, actually, just quickly in closing, there were three pertinent points I made in my neighborhood analysis conclusions. And that starts on page ten of fifteen. And that, first of all, number one, the overwhelming majority of the neighborhood, in excess of eighty-three percent, was introduced more than fifty years ago, uh, with approximately fifty percent predating the nineteen sixties, which just reflects some kind of an older neighborhood. Number two, the average neighborhood is at a lot density of one unit per ten thousand, a total land area. However, there were a couple of parcels that are rather sizable, and I didn't wanna start playing the game of whether they're gonna be developable, and that's, they kinda skewed the numbers. So if you took just those few out and left the forty parcels remaining, it would, it reduced it to eight, six, eight, one. The reason why this property is zoned in a residential eight-manner is because the neighborhood is developed in that manner. In comparison, based on our density, we're looking at a density of one unit per fifteen thousand three hundred square feet, as of identified. We're not trying to maximize the full development potential of this property. And then, uh, number three, finally, purely looking at present lot size from a mode perspective, while in excess of one-third of the neighborhood fails to comport with the dimensional criteria. So, in fact, there was a number of older house lots that predate zoning and don't comport with today's regulations. That, that, and that's a common feature in a lot of older neighborhoods in, in many communities in Rhode Island. So, having said that, I felt very confident in determining that we could achieve neighborhood compatibility and consistency.
Thank you.
All right, I don't know if you have any questions?
Have any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, uh, Paul Bannon, uh, is here. He provided testimony before this board at master plan with regard to the traffic. Uh, nothing has changed. Uh, he is available to answer any of the board's questions, but, uh, we don't wanna go over ourselves too much. So, um, uh, those are all of our witnesses at this time. Thank you.
Appreciate the witnesses to stay because.
Yes.
Uh, anyone else to speak in favor of this?
I, I have, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have some questions. I remember back in the beginning when we talked about this, there was questions about that sewer connection line and easements. Had that been taken care of?
Uh, so, so if you look at, uh, page five of the plan set, it shows it, it shows, uh, an easement from Coeset Avenue into the new road cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Well, that, that's the easement for the water connection.
Okay.
Line will actually come down the street.
So is, it's, it's not going through the property anymore? If I look at that correct, right?
Right, yeah, so not, is that correct? But Tim's gonna correct me.
Uh, for the record again, Timothy Behan, engineer.
Show both sides. There's a sewer easement going from the cul-de-sac area down to, uh, the Nito Street, and a water easement going from the cul-de-sac area to the Coeset. Flip this around to show the board.
I see it now.
Yeah.
You're confused because you, it isn't hatched.
Yeah, down here.
Crosshatch one of your question.
Yeah, in there. So this is the easement area.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, are those easements that are on private property that are gonna be created for this development?
Yes.
Uh, subject to my review?
Yes, that's in the, uh, that's in the planner and technical review notes, and, uh, we agree with those proposals.
Okay, uh, anyone else speak in favor? Anyone wants to propose to this? Brad, step forward.
Jason Lachaty.
Please state your name and address.
Yeah, we did. It's all right. Jason Lachaty, twenty-six Carlson Circle.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Ready?
Over there.
I, I look at this from a different perspective.
I I look at this from a different perspective. I'm not doubting all the permits have been made. I I understand the whole process. A seller wants to sell and a buyer is going to buy. In this case, the buyer, so the seller's out of it. Buyer's here saying, I want to do this to the property. They want to make money. I get it. I'm sure the house is going to be of quality standard. Personally, I really don't care if they're made out of straw. I'm here for one reason. The entrance is going to be facing my home. Nobody else is mine. So with that, there there comes an issue. So I just want to recap really quick, and I won't talk too long, I promise. September two thousand nineteen, we sat here. And stipally a stipulation was made to check with the DOT to see if an entrance could go out to Coeset Avenue. Few months later, February, January, February of two thousand twenty, it was the planning board voted to remove that stipulation. So two years later, we still don't know if a road could actually go out to Coeset Avenue or not. The re one of the reasons why I couldn't go to Coeset was because the house was owner occupied. That's no longer the case. So question is, can an entrance go out to Coeset Avenue? Does anybody know?
Question, Mr. Corwin, wasn't that addressed? And did you actually apply to the state? Is that being a viable option? Before we we decided to take it off the table?
That that is, so I guess I don't really know how to phrase it. No, right. The answer to your question is no, right? The stipulation was removed. That was not investigated. Okay. So we came before this, we came before this board and explained at that time why it wasn't a reasonable circumstance for this project, and this board voted to remove that stipulation. And Mr. Luchardi correctly states that that was not pursued.
I think I can fill in. That was a situation where the stipulation was originally passed. The applicant then came back before the board, informed the board that the resident on Coeset Avenue intended to stay there, that she had no intention of selling or moving, and the board was agreed to remove the stipulation because there was could be no access if she ins insisted on staying in her house. So that was the reason why the stipulation was removed, to the best of my recollection, because the there was going to be a house there, so there was going to be no access.
Well, I I believe something else was said that she didn't want traffic going by her house, and I don't blame her at all. I didn't blame her. I don't want to go and buy my house either. So I'm in that same situation. So the seven house lots, we all understand that. Of course, there's going to be extra traffic. There's going to be more cars in the in that complex coming out. So and I'm not disagreeing with the traffic expert. I'm not an expert. I just live there. I see it every day. I see the speed that goes on over there. You know, I understand how the stop signs are going to go in. There's stop signs right down the street. It's four, it's four-way stop sign. I see people blow by them like they're not even there. So it's going to be an issue. So again, has nothing to do with the car family, the developer, nothing. I understand they've made all the requirements. I'm not against that. But now we have the effects on on the people that are there right now, because right now we have an open field. So the effect on my house, my family is the lighting. I brought that up two years ago. My wife is sick to her stomach over this. You know, I lived there with my wife and children. We've been there for twenty-three years. And others longer than me, they can speak for themselves. So I have a child with Down syndrome and autism. And there are lights that come in now that we have to try and I can't explain this. Does anybody have any, not to insult anybody, have has any experience with dealing with an autistic child? You don't have to answer if you don't want. All right, it's fine. But but I do. So and the lights that will be coming in to straight to my house, well, is going to affect this boy. You know, and mentally, if you don't know it, you don't live it, you'll know you won't understand it. But it's going to drive this kid crazy. And that's not right. So I'm up here thinking of him. I understand the checklist is made. We met all the, the design is great, the water filtration, all that kind of stuff. That's that's your job. Mine is to protect my kid. So you're the ones voting. So excuse me a minute. You know, I met with the builders, my wife and I, you know, back in two thousand nineteen or so. They seem like great people. There's nothing against them. They want to be good neighbors. I I get it. And I thought of every solution. I think about this every day when I leave my my house of what am I going to be looking at? You know, I don't care if the seven houses, ten houses, they're made of brick, wood, straw. I don't care. All I know is what's coming into my house, and that that should be thought of before making any type of decision. You know, I've looked at how I can protect my property from all this lighting, and I can't. It's my front yard. This is it's my front yard, just like this. It's an open yard, and in that screen, you're going to have everything coming in. And it's it's that simple. So that's why I I kept bringing up Coeset Avenue, because it takes that it takes that issue away. And there's other ways to do it, too. I mean, I've looked at the map. There's other ways to design the map, you know, with keeping of of your drainage lots. You know, it's just a matter of somebody, somebody thinking a different way. I don't know if it'd be seven house lots, might be six, might be five. I have no idea. I'm not a designer. You know, an easy way to to really round out the circle, you know, being realistic, is you have room for most likely two lots, and that will round out the circle. You come down Donato's, and it's Donato's. You come down Donato's, you take a right onto Carlson Circle, you go by one, two, three houses, and then there's the field. You put another house and another house with a small front yard, a driveway, and a long backyard, and that's what makes the circle. I understand that's not, that's not going to be in the cards, but that's that's how it is. So I don't understand the why, why we didn't even ask DOT about going out to Coeset Avenue. I know you dropped the stipulation, but that would have solved all these problems. The sewer line is going to go out a different way than Carlson Circle, and so is the water line. So it only makes sense, I think, you know, again, I'm not an expert, but to evaluate everything. Because it's going to be a really, really harmful effect on my family, and that's, again, that's not right at all. So thank you.
Chris Tyler, thirty-one Carlson Circle.
Would you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thirty-one Carlson Circle.
Yes. Tyler, T Y L E R. E R.
Yeah.
Yes. I have the same concern as Jason. I live there, too. The entrance is a problem with me, too. I I think there's another way probably to do that. Do I know the answer? No. You know, but I have to sit here and speak to try to, I live there. You know, you can do all the traffic studies you want. That road there, we don't have sidewalks. I see everyday people walking their kids, dogs, just like any other neighborhood. And when there's cars on both sides, there's no rule. You're going to add to it. You know, if you look at this thing, Coeset Avenue is right there. Let it go out that way, and then we have no problem. Build whatever you want. That's the only thing I'm trying to say is I'm just trying to keep the neighborhood the way it is. It's kind of safe. It's not the greatest, but it's it's kind of safe. Water, put in drainage, that's that's great, but I mean, what happens underneath the ground? When you start tapping, because we have, my basement floods all the time. Is this going to make it worse or better? Nobody can answer that, and I can't either. But I have to speak and say what it is. All right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Jody Falco.
Right, please.
Fifteen Carlson Circle.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I will. Thank you. DeFalco, D E F A L C O. I have a concern because in nineteen fifty-three, I built a house there. It was a dirt road. And in that dirt road, there was three, four houses. And in there, we had a cellar that was water every single day that it rained. The reason is for this because cesspools were there for all our houses. Now, I build those. I worked for, and I did all those foundations. And three feet down is hardpan. Now, I don't, I want the definition of a drywall when you say every house has a drywall. What does this mean? Does the water run into the drywall and then settle there and supposed to drain in the water on the ground? It won't go. The people down below me used to have to take, believe it or not, before we had the sewerage, and I believe we got the sewerage in in seventy-two. It solved our problem. The reason was water was going into the ground. Now, I want the definition of a drywall. When you say you have, each house will have a drywall. Is this water coming off from raining and then standing there? Then we're going to have the same problem when we had sewerage before sewerage. What is a drywall?
I'm sorry, Mr. DeFalco. You have to direct your comments to the board.
Oh, I thought you were the engineers.
I I can't respond directly to you. My apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I want a definition of a drywall.
Okay.
All right. That's why I was going to this gentleman. Now, well, thank you. Okay.
Now, for the record, Timothy Behan, engineer, drywall, and in our case, is going to capture the roof runoff, bring it with a pipe to an area, very shallow area we designed, crushed stone. It's the water is stored in the the voids of the crushed stone, and over time, it seeps back into the ground slowly.
Well, down below me, when I build those, we put all stones for supposedly draining, and it don't work after four years.
The key is you got to do it above the water table. So ours is above the water table. Remember the condition, we has to be above the water table. If you dig an eight-foot hole into the water table and put fresh stone down there, it doesn't work. We get that.
Yeah, there's a stipulation that it's going to be to the bottom of this, the drywall is going to be two feet above the water table. That's a stipulation I believe.
So all the water is going to go into the ground, right? Whenever we have two or three inches of what going to go in the ground, where's it going to go? It don't go through that hardpan.
We're we're, we we asked the the engineer, they had test holes dug, they're going to have, continue to have test holes dug where these systems go. I I don't think we can get in.
What happens then if I, we all start getting water in our cellars again?
Good question. I have an answer for that.
Well.
I don't know what to do then, but but in the meantime, I got to make sure that we have a plan that in the plan is designed to make sure that doesn't happen, and that's what they presume.
And if it does happen?
Yeah, just just one, the the current DM stormwater rules actually require what's called recharge. They don't want us to just take water and shed it away really quick, because that in the summertime dries up all the streams. So they want us to capture a certain amount of runoff by code, hold it, let it seep back in the ground, so that keeps the water tables up. I know it's not good for people who have sellers in the in in the water table, but they were built wrong back then. It's it's unfortunate, but it's just substandard construction back then.
Well, all the water drains on the street from my homes. Why can't it happen on a on your place?
That's the rules. That's the rules. If they had those rules when your house was built, it might have been better for you.
I know. Exactly.
Rules now, I, you can't have the stormwater from the roof, your house fall into the street. It's not allowed. Got to find a way to control it.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate you listening, Paul. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you do have one person on Zoom that would like to comment.
Okay. Go ahead.
Janet should be joining you shortly.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Hello?
Hello.
Janet, please state, Janet, please state your name and address.
My name is Janet Kaye Wett. I live at thirty Carlson Circle, right the next house after Jason.
Would you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Notice, Paula.
Just to follow, oh, follow up to what Jason and Chris were talking about, that interesting, the the corner where Jason and Chris kind of live across from each other, I'm behind Jason, that's the most dangerous curve on the whole Carlson Circle, because it's a very sharp curve, and I as well don't understand how the traffic is going to come out there. People, you know, squeal going around the corner because, of course, teenagers are speeding around, and you have to call, you know, you call in once in a while. But i- is it all going to be set back from where the road ends now, because there's hardly any room now, and as we've all said, there's people that walk their dogs, they walk their babies, their children, the children are outriding on bicycles, and it's dangerous now. You can't see who's coming around the corner until you get right up it, you know, right up to the corner. And I think that's one of the main concerns. We don't care if there's houses there, you know, and and the other we just want it to be safe where we have to exit and enter our our personal properties and without anybody in the neighborhood getting hurt. And as well as, you know, myself, when I go walking in the morning, you say, oh, you know, the all the traffic's like from seven to nine, but if you go walking at eight o'clock in the morning and people are coming zooming around, there's no place to walk because there are no sidewalks, no sidewalks were ever built in the neighborhood. And and the other thing is that my, another concern of mine is that I as well as everybody else in the neighborhood gets flooding when we have a lot of of rain. And now they're saying they're putting it out to Donato's. But there's a swamp there, and that's already a high water table where, so where is the water going to, it's going to all end up? It it's not going to, it's only going to exacerbate the situation. It's not going to make it better. And that's just some of my personal concerns as well. I mean, my house was built in nineteen eighty-six, so I'm hoping that it was built properly. I've been told it was very well-built. And I still get flooding in my basement. And and again, I'm not even near the, I mean, I'm like behind Jason's house, the next one on, you know, on Carlson Circle. So those are just, I think those are our main concerns. I don't care if they build ten houses or twelve houses. I just, it's it's going to make our neighborhood unsafe for the people that currently live there if the egress and access is right there. I I just don't see how it's going to work without causing us danger. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Jason, you wanted to come back?
I sparked a few more questions. We'll, um, there was talk, I don't know, a couple of years ago when we had a meeting here of this being a homeowners association. And we were told it was going to be a homeowners association.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so.
That's that's a stipulation that came from the technical.
So question on that, if if something happens within that development, this development going in, and it starts to affect the street. It's hard because you really want to work. Everybody wants to work together. It's it's all one neighborhood, but this is being pushed in there. So if anything comes out of that, and now it's separate because it has its own association, if that affects any of the houses, namely mine, who who do I, who do I go to? Go to the association?
Yes.
Yeah.
Spoke about this earlier.
Okay. We know how that works, so.
Again, Mr. Chairman, it becomes the question of, is it a public problem or a private problem that is occurred? If it's private, it's between Jason and the homeowners. If it's private, it's between Jason and the homeowners association. If it's public, then the town can step in. But there's no, you have to see each.
It's going to be a public street though, right? Town's going to, is a town going to pick up trash there?
Yes.
So it's a public street?
Yeah, the, I think the issue, I assume correctly if I'm wrong. But I think the issue is around maintaining the, the stormwater catch basin areas that.
That's where the homeowners association comes in.
Homeowners association probably.
Yeah, maintaining the infrastructure that's on private property.
Okay.
Okay. The part of the infrastructure that's on private property, there's some because it'll go into this lot. And these lots are not owned by the town. The lots where they have the big water retention.
Okay.
So I had a question. Is it homeowners, is there a difference between a neighborhood association or a homeowners association? Is that interchange, that's interchangeable?
I think it's interchangeable. Al, is there a difference between?
Homeowners is illegal to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. And neighborhood association, does that?
It's usually just a group of, it's usually just a group of people that want to have a, a.
Hours.
Okay.
So do we?
So, so if the stipulation is that there be a neighborhood association, that means they have less clout than if it's a homeowners association?
A neighborhood association is not a legal function.
Okay.
It's just a group of neighbors that got together.
So, so.
So do the neighbors.
Who's then responsible for maintaining these storm retention areas?
The homeowners association.
It's got to be a homeowners association.
It's got to be a homeowners association. And we go back to approve by me.
Okay. Has to be approved by the, the, the council for zoning and planning. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Has, has anyone thought of snow? I know we've, we've had about five different, you know, five storms over the past, past winter and some of them pretty big.
It is going to be plowed by the town.
But where, where does it going?
I don't know.
Because that's where it goes. Your entrance is where it goes. That's where the snow, obviously you can probably put it somewhere else, you know, block, block all our driveways in, it's fine.
Yeah.
But so my last question is with, with lighting. If this goes through like it is on this map.
Yeah.
And the lights are going into my house. And now I'm, we're suffering from that internally. Who do we go to?
Well, that's a good question. Because my understanding is in the new development, all light is going to be pointed in, into the new development? Or am I, or if I got that wrong during the corner?
Mr. Chairman, I think he's talking about headlights from cars. I'm talking about all lights.
All lights. Headlights, headlights, I don't know what we can do. But, but lighting on the property.
Street, street lights.
Yeah.
Installed by the developer, transferred to the town.
Yeah.
Right? House, house lights are private ownership. Right? You know, obviously.
Yeah, I understand.
People, yeah, I'm just trying to answer the question. Different things, but I think in conjunction with the town, we could maybe use whatever we can, you know, as far as the lighting regulations to, to move them away.
Right.
To the intersection.
Yeah.
I mean, the, if you look at the Rhode Island building code, they've adopted the newest energy code. So when you look at that, it talks about Doc Sky compliance. And I believe, maybe Al can help me. I, I think there's something in our, our zoning and, and planning about light infiltration. About how many foot candles it can, can be spilled. And I believe it's shop cutoff.
I would defer to someone.
Yeah. Mr. Barrett, I think for, certainly for any private lighting, West Wall zoning and subdivision regulations require downward lighting of a certain alumina value. I, I think the street light don't, don't fall under that. But, you know, it's really up to the technical review committee to consider things like that. Maybe give an allowance for moving a street light or having it less, showing less light. You know, this, in a neighborhood like with a cul-de-sac, there seems to be reduced need. So, you know, those are things that the technical review committee, fire department, police department.
Yeah.
DVW can agree to.
Yeah.
Am I stating that correctly?
Yeah. Um, yes. So, so like whatever their public safety concerns are, you know, we could look at what's required for like the street lighting and see if there's an approach that they could take that will still meet their public safety criteria, but, but mitigate the amount of lighting.
Agreed. Okay.
So, so that's, that's AP thirteen lot six, six hundred.
That's your justice.
And your, and your concern is vehicles that come out of the cul-de-sac.
And then turn left.
Right. So, so that basically would be, that, that's basically would be the homeowners in the lots and the cul-de-sac.
Right. That's right.
I don't know.
But so when you say the headlights.
Yeah.
When they're driving down the cul-de-sac, the headlights are not pointed to your house. But if they make a left turn, they're going to flow right across your house. That's the question, I believe. Is that your understanding?
My, all I care about is I don't want light shining in my house.
Right. I got it.
That's it. I understand development and all that. And again, this whole thing tonight, I'm not against any of that. I'm not against development. But I have to protect my family here. So my question is, if there's a disruption, a major disruption to the quality of life for my family, who do I go to? That is, I know it's a good question. And nobody can answer it. I can't go, the builders are gone, right? They're good neighbors who tried to do it. They're gone. Planning board's still here? Do I go to the, the planning board? Do I go to the council, the town manager? Do I go to the governor? Who do I go to?
It's, it's, Jason.
Go ahead, Al.
I'm trying to head this off before, before things happen, you know, trying to be proactive. Because I know once the shovel's put in the ground and the plans improve, plans approved, that's, you know, shame on me at that point.
The problem, Jason, is there's a hundred different things that could adversely affect you, of which seventy-six could be private and the rest public. And you, until, until the problem arises, unfortunately, the, it can't be answered.
Yeah.
That's too bad.
Yeah, that's too bad.
It is. So we got to be reactive rather than proactive, right?
Well, I, from, the planning, that's not a decision the planning board can weigh in on.
So who makes that decision?
I don't know. Well, our job is to see if the plan that they submit meets the zoning requirements and it is appropriate engineering and all of that stuff. And as far as what the impact it would have on, on an individual that is separate from what the community at, at large would, has already imposed in the zoning ordinance, we don't act on that.
Okay, so that's fine. But I'm up here before you. If you don't do it, that's fine.
I, I understand what you're saying.
So how do I find out who does though? Because you're the ones making a decision tonight.
I think it's not the planning board.
Yeah, I, I, I think a lot of that is, is you'd have to look at, and I, I don't know, I'm just telling it's out there, but the ADA Act. And the ADA is regulated by the Attorney General's Office. And there might be something in there that, that talks about this type of stuff and protecting.
So that's the road we want to go down?
Let me, let me.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that's the only thing I can think of. The Attorney General's.
Let me ask you this. When we, when we look at all the projects, we hear about, we hear about how do you block site, bushes, trees? You know, what, what, what else can you do? Shades. You know, you certainly can't put a big fence up in front of the house.
Right.
I mean, you know, if you, as, as, as the developer talked about any type of plantings or any types of, I mean, things are done for sound. Right? Commonly done for sound.
So anything, anything to mitigate the impacts of this?
So.
Well, the homeowner would have to have no problem with trees in front of his house.
Right. So we have met a couple of times with Mr. Lachry, not, not me myself. And things like you mentioned, Mr. Apollia, were, you know, discussed. Window films, vegetative buffers, an extension of fencing. We have, we, at Master Plan, we angled the road away from his house as part of the design. So that, you know, while driving, the lights go down, they continue down Carlson Circle. Rather than strike a house. But no denying that when a car takes a left turn, the headlights.
Is there a way to plant trees in front of this house to mitigate light shining in the windows? Would he, would he agree to do that?
Sure I would. Sure I would. How many trees? And where you going to put them? Right in the middle of my driveway? That's the only place. That's, this is like my driveway right here, my opening. There's nowhere to put them. I have one tree and it sheds its leaves in the fall and it comes back in the spring. It's about five months where I'm going to get all this. You know, I, I, believe me, I'm not trying to be an obstructionist here. Right? I did meet with the builders. We talked about it. You know, it's, to me, move the entrance. Move the entrance. That's, that's the way to do it. You know, if nothing is done yet except a piece of paper.
So I did have a question about that. Relative to the, the entrance, right? So I, I guess that since the last time, there was a, a change here. Circumstances have changed. The existing dwelling that's going to remain, is that, that going to remain? Like, has there been a study or is there, okay, so it's going to stay?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no plan to, consideration, make another plan, maybe have how? Yeah. So my question.
So.
Yeah, I did. But I guess from what I recall, from what you call that someone living there and that's, that was.
Right.
Procluding that, but.
Yeah, that, that house is going to stay. Just as it's designed, as it exists.
Yeah.
As part, as part of the development.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
So I guess the answer is you, they don't want to do it. Never mind, they can't do it. So, well, I, I get it.
That's a builder's decision.
I get it. I get it. Good neighbors, right?
We have to act on the plan that was presented to us.
So can we change those plans or is that, are those set in stone?
If, if they meet the planning and zoning requirements, we have to prove it. I'm just civil, I, I hate to say this, Jason. I feel for your, your circumstance, but it's not our, our purview. If these, if the plans have appropriate engineering solutions to engineering challenges, have, meet the zoning requirements, all the set, the lots are the right size, they get the right setbacks, we got storm, adequate storm drainage, we have to prove it. That's our role. We can't become the builder developer and say, change your plan. No, we can't do that.
Is this the right form to ask if the builder is willing to change, alter the plans?
No, not here. I mean, you can maybe.
So if you approve it right now.
Yeah.
Right? Then it's done, right?
Have you asked, have you asked them previously?
We've had, we've had two discussions.
You asked them if they're willing to change the plans? You, you've, you've, you've asked them already previously.
Mm-hmm. They're going to lose the house lot.
Do you want to ask them again?
I could ask them right now. We're all here.
Well, I think if.
They don't want to, they don't want to.
I think if you've asked them previously, well, I don't want to turn this into a, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I think if you ask them personally, they probably addressed it. But that's up to the attorney.
Yeah. Yeah.
If, if the attorney can.
Yeah.
If, if the attorney wants to converse out in the corridor, that's your choice.
Did that last time, I think.
So, yeah, I mean, this is the plan that we've submitted for this board's vote. You know, this has been a long time in the works. You know, we're, we're not in a position to change it, you know, make decisions like that on the fly. It's, it's a good subdivision. It fits. So you, no, I mean, we, yes, we have discussed it, but no, we're not willing to take that step.
Yep. Yeah. Okay. And, and.
So, so is the person still living there? Because I remember that being the.
She has passed.
She has passed. So, so.
So that was like the main driver for that, if, if I recall, that the person was living there. So that wasn't so like, it seems like circumstances have changed.
That was, that was not the, the main driver of our request, unfortunately. And, and this is regrettable, some of the neighbors made accusations that she no longer lived there. And we had to take the additional steps to prove that she was alive and resided there. So that was an unfortunate development that occurred at Master Plan. That is not our justification. We, we had to take this unbelievable step of affirming her viability.
Mr. Chairman, if I may step in on that. I, I think there's a little more to it than that. The situation initially was that the board requested the applicant seek approval of DEM for an exit out onto Coeset Avenue. The applicant came back and said that they could not do that because the resident intended to stay there. So there was no access to DEM. Somebody questioned the residence being there. The affidavit submitted, the applicant submitted an affidavit stating that she was still there. And based on the fact that you had a person living there who the testimony was, had no intention of moving. The stipulation for the access to Coeset Avenue was dropped. But the stipulation was dropped because with a person living there, access became impossible.
My name is Barbara DeFalcone.
Raise your right. Could you raise your right hand, please? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. I live at fifteen Carlson Circle. And if they opened the road to Coeset Avenue, everything would be fine. Because when you go down to Dante Street and you try to get out on Coeset Avenue from Dante Street, we have a problem now. Not only from rainwater or the swamp, but everybody that drives down there can't get on Coeset Avenue. Its traffic is horrendous. If they brought the traffic from that other place, those people are going to come all the way around again. And there's going to be worse traffic over there. And there's always a river right there where the swamp is. So if they solve the problem by putting the road from, from there to Coeset Avenue, it'd solve all their problems.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maybe you have your traffic engineer come up because a couple of people raised that question.
Does somebody reside there now, Mr. Chairman? With the passing of the stipulation?
I think it's an empty house. I think it's an, I don't know, Josh, but I think it's an empty house right now.
One second, Paul. So, Mr. Chairman, Paul Bannon, traffic engineer.
We just proved him as an expert witness in a previous hearing tonight. So I guess he's, I guess, is he, is he sworn in again, Al?
You're, you're still under oath, Paul.
Still under oath, Paul. Okay.
I, I can answer any questions. Paul Bannon, B-A-N-N-O-N. I can answer any questions relative to, you know, the amount of traffic. It is, it is a, again, a residential subdivision that only generate five to seven cars in, in the peaks. So you're not going to.
One extra car every ten minutes.
Yes, if that. Relative, relative to opening up to.
Ms. Kayewatt, can you, can you sign out, please?
I'm sorry. Well, I wanted to say something else. I just mute myself.
Relative to opening up to, to, to Coeset Ave. Good design, opening up to Coeset Ave would to be extending it into the neighborhood, not putting in a cul-de-sac. Common planning practice would be creating a network of streets. So your plows, your garbage doesn't have to go back and forth out onto the main roadway. You keep, the proper planning process would be to connect your local streets. So if we were to connect, we wouldn't cul-de-sack it. We would recommend it go straight through, which are.
I have a question for you. Is there any issue with having another street come out as between Denatus and the next street, Highview? Without enough frontage along Coeset Avenue? Or is there adequate frontage now?
I don't know the exact frontage on, you know, you would need.
You need a, a roadway right of way to do that.
So you couldn't keep the house up front. So, but relative to the proposed intersection, as indicated, it's a ninety degree. We, we've recommended it become a three-way stop sign. Cars coming out of our subdivision go, goes, can go straight. It's a continuous road. Again, we've offered to put in mechanisms to limit or restrict lighting as, as much as possible. There's a six-foot fence right there now and long as property frontage. There's a parking the spaces for four vehicles that he parks in front of his car. The spaces for four vehicles that he parks in front of his car, so, you know, driving, pulling left out, you're blocked by the fence, you're blocked by the cars that are in front of his house today. Um, so, you know, we could augment that, whatever, you know, he deems appropriate, but that would be part of.
Thank you. Any questions of the traffic engineer, anybody? Thank you.
Just, uh, one quick thing, I mean, it sounds probably crazy, uh, Mr. Chairman, is there a possibility we, we see around St. Edward Island, if you go, uh, you know, might help alleviate this, it's probably something you can't do, but can you put a sign up that says no left turn out of that, that complex?
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna, I was just gonna step in on that. Any traffic control device must go through Major Ashimo on the Traffic Study Commission and then go to the council. Uh, Planning Board has no authority there, it has to be done by ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jason. I'm not a traffic expert, but, um, some of the streets in the neighborhood, uh, Highview, which was mentioned here tonight, you can't go through Highview. You go there from Coeset Avenue.
Right.
Um. Fremont, right, it's near the fire station, right? You can go straight, that's it, so five or six houses. Hamlet, which is across the street. You go in, you come out the same way off Coeset Avenue. These are all streets that are in the same, same area, we're not across town. And then Hollow Circle, which is across also, and that's in, uh, across Coeset Avenue, right down the street, circle. Go in from Coeset, you circle around, you come out. So, and as far as the vehicles that are in my yard, I do have four vehicles in my yard, yes. It's not my, not my intent to do this long-term, so it's going to be a half-circle driveway like it was.
Yeah.
So, so it'll be, so it'll be breathing room there, so, um, so when headlights do come in. You know?
Yeah.
So, but I'm allowed to have vehicles in my driveway, right?
Fence up now?
Yeah, I have a fence, yeah.
How tall is the fence?
Six.
How tall do you think it should be to block lights?
Twenty.
Fortress.
Well, I, I have a big house, I mean, there's nothing, I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to be an obstructionist here, it is what it is, I mean, I've, you know, I've, believe me, I've lived this every day thinking, how can we make this better and what are we in for? So you can talk to anybody, this is just how it is. So what would help is, obviously it'd be changing the map, so that's probably out of the question. But to have a house, one of the seven, the back of their house, like at that wall, facing my house. So the only lights I would get would be an outside light or it'd be their windows. And that's it, either that or I just shut my windows and black everything out, put just vinyl them in, right? So, here's what it is.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, you still have two people on Zoom that have their hands up also that would like to speak.
Let them come first, or you wanna go next?
Oh, actually, uh, Mr. Bannon had an interesting idea. Um, it, it might be worth exploring, uh, with the town of West Warwick, whether, uh, Carlson Circle could be turned into a one-way. Uh. Well, maybe, maybe, I guess maybe the neighbors don't like that. I, I thought it was interesting, right? Uh, it, uh, it solves a lot of problems, but the, uh, the reaction is not so hot.
That's not working, it's not working, it's not working, all right. So Joe, who's, all right, somebody else coming up, all right, we got somebody here, Joe, then we'll get the two people you have on line. You're funny.
Hi.
Hi, who are you?
Uh, Jimmy Pollitt, uh, I'm retired construction worker. Your address, please? To Carlson Circle.
Okay.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing, other truth.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, P O L L I T T.
Pollitt, okay, okay, Mr. Pollitt, what do you have to say?
Few minutes ago, uh, somebody mentioned sidewalks, there are none on Carlson Circle. Is that gonna make my taxes go up? When they build the, the, the cul-de-sac and they have the, the beautiful street with the lined, uh, um, nah, nah, I didn't think so. I, I really don't plan on, uh, changing anybody's mind because I think it's a done deal. Um. They're built on, uh, I'm assuming they're built on slabs, which means, uh.
Are they?
Yeah, they, they'll have to be built on slabs.
I don't, I don't, construction details.
Construction details, I'm not hearing.
Yeah, um, they'll crack, by the way, um, with all the water there. Anybody who knows anything about concrete knows it expands and recedes with water because it's made with water. And that's why they, you get stress cracks. Um, anyone who knows anything about West Warwick knows that it's notorious for Orangeburg sewer pipe. And anyone knows anything about Orangeburg knows that it breaks down, it becomes very brittle after about forty years. Now, when they tie in to this sewer pipe and it becomes brittle and it breaks apart in their hands, when they tie in, is that gonna make my taxes go up? No, he, he doesn't have an answer for it.
It's a separate issue.
Uh, uh, Orangeburg is not, uh, um, by the way, Kent County will not take any responsibility for it.
And your taxes are not an issue, I'm sorry.
The, 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 they don't make Orangeburg anymore, by the way. Um, so when they tie in, um, to the Orangeburg, uh, it, Carlson Circle is nothing but a patchwork quilt.
Yeah, yeah.
And when they tie into the Orangeburg and it becomes brittle and they tie into it and becomes brittle and breaks apart and they tie in and morbid breaks apart, uh, and my, my tax is gonna have to pay for that. Because it's out in the street, by the way.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Joe, a couple of people raised their hand.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Iris.
Okay.
In the talk.
Okay.
Here we go.
Can you hear me?
Please state your name.
Yes, we do.
Please state your name and address.
Okay, it's my husband who wants to speak, okay? All right.
Okay, please, please state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Stephen Giamaco and I live at Nine Lee Street, which is right off of Carlson Circle, goes through the middle of it.
Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'm trying to answer some of the questions, a, a couple of the things that they were talking about as far as, uh, water in the area. I live in one of the oldest houses that were put in this plaque. Well, coming off of Lee Street, they were built on, um, cement slabs, mainly because the water table is so high that, um, you really can't put a basement in. Uh, the top of this hill is one big basin. My, my slab fills up in the wintertime with, where my water meter is, almost to the top of the slab, maybe about an inch down from the top at times during really bad storms. But, um, which all relates like Carlson Circle and everything is all within the same area. And basically the way the slab is, is like dug out. Now, I've been living here for over, but almost thirty years now. And I, you know, paid my taxes and all that good stuff and I've been seeing a lot of what's been going on. I've been listening to a lot of the gentlemen that have come up and, and said, you know, a lot of the stuff. But one of the bigger issues that I was concerned that a couple of years ago was the water pressure within this area. Now, obviously I have some older homes and we don't have the piping of the newer homes that were, then I, like, a lot of the homes have gone to the three-quarter inch water pipes and mine's only like half inch or whatever. But it's getting to the point where they keep adding more and more homes within our area here. But it doesn't seem like they've been increasing the water pressure to accommodate that. My house right now, I'm down to where I, I have a water-efficient washing machine and I can't even, like, get it to even fill the right proper way because I don't even get two or three pounds of pressure, which I'm supposed to be guaranteed five pounds. Now, when I first moved here, there wasn't a, uh, an issue. But over the years, they put in quite a few developments within this area. And I, now I don't have any water pressure. I'm at pretty much the top of the hill and my water pressure is maybe down to like three pounds. I brought this to the attention of the gentleman that was there in the, at, at the time, who was from the water department. He came in, he looked at it, said the same thing. Now, the, I mean, he said my choice was in, was to put in, uh, a water pump at my house. And I'm like, well, I'm supposed to be guaranteed at least five pounds of pressure and I'm not even getting that by law. So, I mean, I'm looking at the attorney now and he's probably looking at me and he's like, this guy's an idiot, you know? But you try to live in a house that doesn't have any water.
Okay.
Or water pressure, for that matter.
Okay, all right.
You know, so I wanna know from the town, are they gonna solve this problem, is you gonna put in another plaque? Two plaques now, from what I, I'm understanding, one off of Narragansett and one off the thing that, that affects this whole area up here. So apparently, pretty soon, I'm not gonna be the only one with a water pressure problem. Because you're talking adding another ten houses down off of, uh, often at the end of Narragansett, now you're talking, but if now you're putting these, this other development in right here on Carlson Circle. And I got no water pressure now.
Yeah. Ask the engineer a question.
Yeah.
Looking at the, uh, we're gonna sheet number fifteen. Water system notes contractor show review and comply with low Kent County Water Authority rules, regulations, installation requirements contracted or coordinated shutdown of existing water main. The K C W A goes on and on, talks about pipe fittings, valves. So on, obviously we have some older homes up there, we have some older homes, you talked about drainage problems on all the homes and, you know, I, you know, I asked a question on drainage after, but in this case, you've got, uh, you've got homes up there that could possibly have water pressure below what it should be?
I don't know his circumstance, but, uh, there's a process at Kent County Water Authority where we draw up the plans, we do hydrant flow tests. They have a hydraulic model of their entire system, so they know the system pressures. I mean, it could be something like a, a partially shut valve somewhere in his neighborhood that needs to be resolved.
If he's starting with low water pressure.
Yeah.
You're, and you're, you're putting a, you're, you're building new, new homes. Uh, is there a process within Kent County Water?
They, they have a model of their entire system, they know the pressures in every pipe in their system because they need to meet the fire flows, keep everybody at least twenty pounds pressure. We're hearing he's less than twenty.
How do they go to Kent County?
I, I would go to Kent County.
Develop, well, first of all, aren't you gonna, has this plan been approved by Kent County?
Yes, we've committed.
So that's not a true statement that you just made, that they don't, the pressures fluctuate and until you ask for a hydrant flow test, that's when they give you the updated results. Um, that, that's how that works with Kent County Water. So ha- has there been a hydrant flow test, uh, performed for this development?
Yes, it's standard practice for the development, we did the hydrant flow test.
And, and did you also state that you were gonna put in a hydrant?
Correct, there's a, the fire, the fire marshal did want another hydrant.
There's gonna be additional hydrant and it's gonna be near the entrance to the robbery?
Correct.
And the water's coming in from Coeset Avenue?
Well, it's a network, so it gets fed from multiple directions, yes.
It's gonna get fed from multiple directions, it, it, it should be fine. All right, and if they have enough flow for a hydrant, after coming in.
But I, I always suggest you contact Kent County because they're the authority on their water system.
Right, thank you. All right, so, uh, Joe, you got somebody else?
Not anymore, I don't have any other hands up.
Okay. All right. Any other, uh?
This is, which one?
All right, I think, okay, um, all right, uh, I'll entertain a motion, we close the public hearing.
I'll move that motion.
Here was your second.
Second.
All right, second, all right, Owen, Owen, favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 All right, so the public hearing is closed, uh, we now need to vote on this and, and I just wanna, I just, I feel for, um, Mr. Luchardi, I understand, I, I don't have, I certainly don't have his day-to-day, everyday experience with, with Joe in, with autism. But I have had some relationships with some kids with autism, I know it's gotta be a real challenge for him. But I don't see how we can do anything other than approve this plan unless we have some technical reason on the plan that we can say, you need to change this, you need to change that. We, we can approve it with stipulations. I don't see us being able to approve going to administrative final, by the way. I don't see that as a possibility, as much as, you know, you guys have your right to, to, to come here and to, to speak and you've done it a couple of times, maybe three times. And you're gonna have, you're gonna get another chance for the final plan. But, um, I, 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 I struggle with this, this is, this is one that, that, you know, I, I feel, Jason, I feel for.
Chairman, um.
But I don't see how.
Mr. Chairman, we, 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 we bypassed that stipulation because, uh, Mrs. Carr was still alive and living in the house. And that's why the stipulation was, was removed. Now that she's not living in the house, could we probably put another stipulation or do something with another stipulation to see if there's a chance now that we could maybe move the access to Coeset Road to the property or is that overstepping the boundaries?
Yeah. Al, can you answer that question for us?
Yeah, I see no reason why, uh, preliminary could not be conditioned on a report from the O T whether or not access is permitted. Uh, that, since that is a state road.
Yeah.
It's not like going to West Warwick Public Works or curb cut, this is, they have to go to D O T, say, here's what we'd like to do and get D O T to, uh, give them approval. But I see no reason why a stipulation too preliminary could not be, uh, a request of D O T as to whether or not access to Coeset, Coeset Avenue is permitted. Not a stipulation saying that access must go to.
No, but access, access that they have to ask the.
D O T whether or not it's.
Whether it can have.
If D O T says, yes, it is permitted, then it comes back to you for what you, what you wanna do with it.
Yep. Okay. Okay, um. All right, we had, um, a number of stipulations that the T R C came up with. That. I guess we should read them into the record again?
Yeah.
All right, and then we'll talk about adding maybe this other stipulation now, see if that's a possibility. Um, all right, the following conditions shall be stipulations for approval of the final plan. So this need to go into place before the final plan can be approved. That all drainage shall be maintained by a neighborhood association, that an annual drainage inspection and report shall be submitted to the town engineer and our building official for review and compliance with routine maintenance of the drainage system. Documents related to the proposed homeowners association, which shall include a deed restriction on each of the new lots in their maintenance obligation, shall be provided to the town planner for approval. That the language for all utilities shall be approved by the planning and zoning legal council. That the developer shall be required to pay a fee in lieu of land dedication, which shall be twenty-five hundred dollars per dwelling unit at the time of application for a building permit as required per Land Development Regulation, Section seventeen dash twenty-one E, Fee's in lieu of land dedication. Um, the onsite drywall detail found on page seventeen of seventeen indicates the drywall for the roof leaders is to be installed with a two-foot differential between groundwater and bottom of the system. Verification of adequate depth to groundwater provided by a design or environmental profession, professional shall be approved by the town engineer. Existing Rhode Island D E M and sewer authority permits must be modified. Okay, and, um. So that's the recommendations from the T R C for stipulations, now we could add another.
Chairman, I think there was, there was also something about two easements that, uh, I wanna re- review.
Okay.
I think you read that, he didn't skip over, did you skip over?
I didn't skip over any of them, I didn't.
He did, he did include a, a, a condition about the language for all utility easements gets approved by, uh, planning.
Yeah.
And zoning legal council.
Yep, 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 all utilities, and it shall be approved by the planning and zoning legal council, that's you, Al, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a question about the word, the term neighborhood association, does that need to be upgraded?
There should be a. That should be a homeowners association.
I'll make that change. It, it was intended to be homeowners association.
Homeowners Association, okay. Thank you. All right, um. And then it has under here, following conditions shall be stipulations for approval of the building permit. It does address the West Ward DPW road opening permit shall be issued, but so what we're suggesting, maybe we add stipulation that the developer go to the State Department of Transportation to see, to determine whether an opening, a curb cut opening to Coeset Avenue could take place, uh, at the other end of the property. So I, yes, yes, you may.
We respectfully object, right, to, to the stipulation suggested.
Yeah.
You have before you a conforming plan.
Yeah.
Um, the suggestion, uh, that there might be some other way is not relevant to the plan as presented. I don't know what the reaction to the DOT is, but it, it's, uh, circular, right? It, it probably won't matter what the decision of the DOT is. We have, we have a plan that we've presented that, uh, the town of West Wallack, uh, approves of, not this board, but the regs, right? And, um, you know, we, we have a house that we're not going to knock down. And, and we're not going to put a street next to it because the DOT is not going to let us. So it, we're, we're going around in circles and, and we've been around the circle before and I understand perfectly that this board doesn't like my attitude on this house, but I get that. But, uh, having us go to DOT and ask those questions is not going to gain anything, uh, for the board or the citizens of this town. So I just want that noted. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I would. Mr. Chairman, on that point, the board has the authority to add that stipulation. The board has the further authority that if the, uh, if, if it comes back in its planning, in my opinion, the board could say, uh, we're not going to grant it. Uh, my, my suggestion would, could very well be that the board also has the authority to continue this hearing for decision until such time, uh, as they, they get. Now I got to think that through because of timeframes for decision. I think the board has the authority to add that stipulation that the, uh, they've got to get a, a statement from DOT. If the, if, uh, they don't like it, they can always appeal the board's decision to the zoning board.
So, any further discussion, board members? What are you thinking?
I'd like to see a stipulation. I mean, it was dropped because she was living in the house and, uh, you know, quite frankly, I mean, it, you know, uh, that's, that's my opinion.
Okay. Others?
I would, I would agree with Josh. I think we should have the stipulation. I, I mean, it was dropped purely because she was still living there. Now, what's going to happen in the house now that she has passed? Is it going to be sold? Is it going to be, you know, transferred in the family? It's kind of one of those where I think they could do the, at least get the letter from DOT and, and off.
I concur with that, yeah. The stimulation, the stipulation was dropped, circumstances changed.
Right, so, um, is it, is it a difficult thing to do to?
I, I apologize. I, it's unpredictable, right? It's around Department of Transportation and because we're not going to remove that house, it'll certainly be more than, uh, administrative paperwork.
Are they, are they, I just want to be clear because I'm taking the minutes. Are you requiring them to get a physical alteration permit?
To the.
I thought we were requiring.
Coeset, State Road.
Yeah.
Yes, so they, they are requesting a permit?
No, I don't know. It's not what I suggested.
Are we, are, where, where we?
Is that the stipulation?
What's the stipulation? What would the stipulation be? I want to repeat what you suggested.
Would this, would this involve significant change of design? Well, yeah, yeah, we, we need to further understand the, you know, a little bit more detail on. This is, uh, uh, I was going to throw some Latin in there because sua sponte is a word that we use for judges who bring up new issues.
Yeah.
Right, during a hearing.
Yeah.
Our design does not include access from Coeset Avenue. It would absolutely disrupt our design. It would be a different design. So that's, the, the short answer to your question is that, um, I don't know what it would look like. Um, I don't know what the DOT would require.
Okay.
Think, thinking it through, as this has just popped up, you know, as, as I'm sitting here thinking it through, by the time DOT acts, uh, you may be in a problem because you've already, uh, approved preliminary. Uh, I think the, as I think it through, the only way you could go forward with that would be to deny the application uh, and see where it goes from there. But I, as I, as I sit here and think the thing through, unfortunately.
On what basis would we deny the application now? For what reason?
Because you're. Because you're concerned about the access plan. But I think, I think the board right now is in a bind. Uh, it either has to deny or go forward with the approval. As, as I sat here thinking it through, because taking the timeframe through, if, uh, if DEM says, yeah, they can go through, if the DOT says, yeah, they can go through there, the developer just says, that's not what we submitted.
Yeah. Right, right. So that, that's, that's what I'm saying. What basis can we deny it? Don't we have to work on what they submitted or not? I don't.
Yes, you do.
Do.
If you, if you want this gentleman to go back to DOT, he would have to decide if he's going to resubmit new plans.
Yeah.
Which he may not submit new plans. Excuse me. Excuse me. We, we have to understand, we have to understand this legally now after, whether we take a ten-minute break and, and talk to legal counsel or we have to understand this because we have a plan in front of us.
Right. Right.
Mr. Appleby, just, just to add one, uh, thing here. So I, I think the planner made, uh, a super pertinent, uh, point, uh, that we kind of glossed over. And that is, the DOT is not going to issue this project in opinion, right? We would have to submit plans and request a PAP, a physical alteration permit from DOT, and if we did that, but we'd have to show the house removed or cut in half or something like that. And if, as long as we had a fifty-foot right-of-way and, and the two adjoining seats, streets, as Mr. uh, Mr. Chairman noted, aren't within the, the restrictions. Uh, they, you know, they would issue it, right? Because we would have to submit plans that complied to, to what we're asking. Because they're not going to issue us an opinion, it would have to be a physical alter, alteration permit.
Mr. Chairman, it wasn't when Sue made that comment that I realized that it was more than I had initially thought, taking it at first blush. And I have to agree with Tom right now.
Comment from the planner?
I'm just pointing out that, you know, it wasn't clear what the stipulation would be, whether they need to go and get a physical alteration permit from DOT or get some sort of opinion from DOT and/or a traffic engineer as to, you know, what the requirements would be or what the likelihood would be that DOT would issue the permit. I just wanted to understand what it was, so.
I don't, I don't think, I don't, I don't believe it's a, it's, I, I, I'm not in belief. I've been doing this for a long time. I'm not in belief that I have to resubmit a whole set of plans, DOT. There's tons of meetings that you can have with DOT. There's opinions that, that give to DOT. Uh, a lot of times DOT doesn't want to waste fifty, sixty hours of their time when a simple question is asked and they formulate an opinion. So I, I'm not in, I'm not in agreement that this will be a, this will be a, you know, a whole rebid process. It's a question. It happens all the time. It's done on a lot of projects. I'm not asking to go redesign the project. I'm asking, can it be a curb cut now that the stipulation was dropped because she was living there? She's no longer living there.
Yeah, but. Josh, I, I think that's true, but I think they would have to submit plans on what they intend to do, where the curb cut would go, which means they'd have to tear down the house. And if they don't want to tear down the house, we shouldn't be telling them they got to tear down the house.
I think that's the problem.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
If DOT says they can do it and they say we don't want to.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an old hunch.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, but it's, so, so anyway, um, so let's vote on the original with all the stipulations except that stipulation. Then we do another vote on that stipulation, okay? And, um, and see where we end up. So I want to attain a motion that we grant, uh, preliminary plan approval subject to those stipulations that were read into the record excluding the one around going to the DOT. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll move the motion.
All right, motion, move, motion made by Felix. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All right, second by Tony. Uh, any further discussion on this?
I thought we wanted to, you know, Felix's recommendation about having a, a discussion, but that's not.
What?
Well, we're going to vote.
This is the first part. We're going to then have a, I'm going to then ask for motion for an, an additional amendment adding that stipulation and we can vote on that separately. Okay, so, uh, any further conversation? No, all right, all those in favor of granting the preliminary?
One question.
Yes.
Based on the legal advice from the attorney.
Yeah.
Based on the documents we have in front of us and the legal advice from the attorney. Am I correct in saying we would have a legal issue if we introduce something on this plan that is not on the plan?
I'm not sure.
If we introduce a stipulation.
That's coming up next. First, we're going to vote on this without that stipulation.
Okay, okay.
Vote on that first and then, then we'll have that conversation. Okay, so all in favor of granting the, the approval, primary approval was subject to the stipulations that came from the, from the, uh, technical review committee that I read into the record. Uh, any further discussion around that? If not, I'm asked that we vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So who voted no?
Do we need a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do a roll call vote. Okay. Okay, all right. Uh, can you read off the, the names for us, too?
So Mr.
De Martino.
De Martino.
Yes, I vote, I vote aye.
Uh, Mr. Apollonia.
Yes.
Mr. Patraca.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Uh, he's the alternate, so yeah.
Sorry.
I got to ask Josh and, and Jessica.
Jessica.
Ms. Rubbery.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes. Joe.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Okay. All right, now I will entertain a motion that we add an additional stipulation that let's make the motion and then we'll have a big discussion, I'm sure. Uh, on, on, uh, requiring the developer to get an opinion from DOT about whether a curb cut can take place. Separate conversation. And so we need a motion before we talk about it. Anybody, anybody want to make that motion?
Motion for discussion?
Motion, yeah, for discussion, then we'll vote on it.
It's a fair discussion. I don't know how we can require it.
Yeah, okay, good.
I mean, I, I.
Don't let your move.
You know. I'll move the motion.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so let's talk about it. Go ahead, Felix. Talk about it. May, oh, approve the, the, the conversation for discussion?
We have.
Okay, oh, aye, all right, good. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Felix.
We have the attorney here. Uh, there's, there's a rest, request, can we, can we vote to act to, to, can we order or is this an order or a request?
If it's a stipulation, it's an order, right, Al?
It's, it's an order, but it's, as I thought it through after Sue made her comment, I think it's an unenforceable. Uh, the DOT comes back and says, yeah, they can make the curb cut, but you can't enforce it.
Yeah.
You can't make them tear that house down and put a road through.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
If we make a vote, it's not going to be.
Yeah, so if we vote to put it on there, it's going to create complications if we vote to deny it.
Let me explain something.
Yeah.
If we do something that is an order.
Yeah.
Obviously, they're going to, they're going to incur a cost to do that.
Yep. Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Well, let's be realistic about it.
Yeah.
There's, there's cost for these gentlemen, an attorney or whatever, I mean, I have to assume they're not working for twenty dollars an hour.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we want to expound on the conversation, I mean, I'll ask the, uh, I'll ask for the comment from the, from the planner. Your thoughts on it?
On whether or not you should include the stipulation?
Yeah.
I would, you know, from, from where, I would want to know, you know, what kind of impacts that would have on the, on the plan, like if it does reduce the amount of units? And that has a.
Well, I think they, I think they could, could tell us conceptually, give us an idea tonight if it would and it, and.
The other, the other thing that I would be concerned about in terms of timing, um, because this, you know, a lot of the, you know, with, with the town planner being away, like a lot of the timing got kind of condensed and so a lot of these have been waiting. Um, what you're potentially asking them to do is something that has a timeframe that isn't set.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you, you're sort of asking them to go on an errand that who knows how long it's going to take.
Right. Right.
And like that, that's a, that's a, that's a concern and why, you know, why I brought up in, in, in the first place, like, are you asking them to request a physical, requested receive a physical alteration permit from DOT?
Yeah.
Which could take how long?
Months.
Months, months for sure. Maybe more.
I mean, you know what? You have a, um, technical expert who is a tra- traffic engineer, you know, you could ask him to opine on what, what the timeframe is for, for, you know, to, to get a physical alteration permit from, from DOT.
Even though the public hearing is over, how long does it take to get a, a physical alteration permit from DOT? It sounds, it sounds reasonable to me.
Was, was our original stipulation for an, an opinion?
It's good.
Yeah, our original stipulation was for, yeah, but was for, for the developer, not for the DOT, as I recall.
If we, if we had the authority here to, if we had the legal authority to act within, within the bounds of, uh, of the authority established by municipal or state law, then, uh, then, you know, obviously, we have to, we have to bear in mind the, 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 the legality of what we operate within.
Yeah.
And where, where we're headed with respect, and I'll have Alda Fury, uh, comment on if we go down that path.
Mr. Chairman, first to adjust Joe's comment. When that original stipulation was put in place, it was a master plan. And I think the, the idea behind it was let's look and see if we can have access to Coeset Avenue before we go forward to preliminary. Whether or not it was wise to drop the, the stipulation because of a person living there is a whole different question, but it, it was dropped. So now you move forward to preliminary and as I said, my initial opinion changed because I think you're now in a situation where you have said to them, come back with your plans and either you approve these plans or as the chairman said, what is your reason for not approving them? But even if DOT says, yeah, they can put a curb cut there, there's no way, in my opinion, that you can say to them, okay, we approved your plan, now we want you to knock down our house and put a street in there. So, so to me, it's, it would be a stipulation that can never be enforced.
All right, uh, board members, any, any further conversation?
Aye.
I think we need to vote on this, um, and it should be a roll call vote. And this is on, on adding the stipulation to go to the DOT, okay?
I mean, I, I still, Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, I, I sit here and I struggle. Um, you know, working as a professional engineer like the rest of the people in this room. I still struggle on this whole submitting plans and alterations and, you know, I, I think they're, they're creating more formalities than what typically can happen in this industry in opinions and that's going to be where I leave it because I'm not in. Because I'm not, I'm not in belief that what we're asking here is the process that they're embellishing that's going to happen. But what we're asking for is is an opinion. And and I've I've gotten over the many years, many of those opinions and statements without resubmitting a whole set of plans, so respectively, I, I just give my opinion.
One last thing if I may address, Josh, my concern is that if the stipulation's passed tonight and they get an opinion tomorrow from DOT that it's okay, there's no way for you to enforce it.
Can't require them to knock down a house.
Can't require them.
They say, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Okay, so, all right, we want to vote on this, this stipulation that, again, that that we get an opinion from the DOT, do a roll call vote.
Yep.
Yeah, no. I vote no.
Mr. Appalonia?
No.
Mr. Patraca?
No.
Ms. Rubbery?
No.
And Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
And Mr. Garcia?
Altive is stone.
Oh, he doesn't have to vote, so it's an alternate, so.
I'll keep it to myself.
You can, you're so, you don't have to, so it passes, it's denied four votes to one. Okay, thank you, thank you, this was a tough one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I hate to do this to myself, but I requested administrative final.
No.
And I know you intended to strike that down.
Yes, so, all right, I have a motion to let this final go to administrative, is there a motion for that? So we can vote it down.
Yes, I'll vote.
What is the recommendation of the planner?
Oh, this has got to come back to here, final.
Whether they should come back to final or not, so in in this case, because there there's so many issues related to drainage, you know, I don't think this is a good candidate for allowing administrative final.
Great, all right, so, all right, so some, a motion to deny administrative.
Make a motion to deny. We want to make a motion to approve and vote no.
Yeah, okay, make a motion to approve.
I make a motion, motion to approve.
Okay, Felix.
A second.
All right, Jessica, a second.
You got all that?
All right, do you need this, do we need a voice vote for this?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
All all in favor of granting the the administrative final, it's designated, say aye, all right, those opposed? No, no. Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, last item on the agenda, item six, public comment. Okay, and nobody here, the public has gone, I I would like, so we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second motion.
So. They will, you know, this is going to be appealed.
No, 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 I know what that means.
You know, so just, just so you know, we don't, we haven't ever, you know, never, this is the first time we had a.
And the recording?
The recording is still on.